Good morning members of the City Council. The meeting will begin shortly. Please remember to log into your devices. Thank you.
Chicago City Council Rules of Convict for Public Meetings 2023 to 2027 Pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure Rule 49: The Sergeant death. Arm sets forth the following rules of convict to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings: Profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed 12 by 12 by 6 inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms.
Hello, hello. Good morning, City Council. Good morning, City Council. The meeting will start momentarily. Can you please take your seats and silence your phones? Can you please take your seats and silence your phones? The meeting will begin momentarily.
Hello, hello. Good morning, City Council. Good morning, City Council. The meeting will start momentarily. Can you please take your seats and silence your phones? Can you please take your seats and silence your phones? The meeting will begin momentarily. Good morning, City Council. Good morning, City Council. Can you please take your seats and silence your phones? The meeting will begin shortly. Can you please take your seats and silence your phones? The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you.
Good morning, Members of the City Council. The meeting will begin shortly. Please remember to log into your devices. Thank you.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, City Council. Please log into your e-device. Please log into your e-device. It will be beginning momentarily. Please log into your e-device. If you need help, please raise your hand. Please raise your hand. We will begin shortly.
The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum is now open. The quorum is now open. Please use your e-device. The quorum is now open. If you need help, please raise your hand. The quorum is now open. I will now call on those for a voice vote. Alderman Laspada, not present in chambers. Alderman Hopkins, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Dow, present. Alderman Beal, not present in chambers. Alderman Lopez, Lopez is present. Alderwoman Coleman, Coleman is present. Alderman David Moore, Moore is present. Alderman O'Shea, not present. Alderman Beal, Alderman Beal is present. Alderwoman Scott, not present in chambers. Alderman Secha Lopez, Secha Lopez is present. Alderman Burnett, Burnett is present. Alderman Irvin, Irvin is present. Alderwoman Cruz, Cruz is present. Alderman Conway, not present in chambers. Alderman Vasquez, happy birthday, Alderman Vasquez. Alderwoman Mana Hoppinworth, Mana Hoppinworth is present. Alderwoman Haddon is not present in chambers. Okay, Mana Hoppinworth is present. All right, we have a quorum. The quorum is now closed.
There are 45 members that are present. So we do have a quorum. There are a number of alders that have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59. Madam Clerk, could you verify Alders Laspada, Haddon, Conway, and Scott?
Alderman Laspada.
Present.
Alderwoman Haddon, not present. Alderman Conway.
Present.
Alderwoman Scott.
Present.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation and have them added to the roll call? It's been moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please add Laspada, Conway, and Scott to the quorum roll call. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please remain standing for our invocation this morning, which will be delivered by Pastor Bob Wong of the Chinese Christian Union Church.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this time to gather together to meet today and for this moment to acknowledge you and to invite you here. Thank you that you're a God that hears and invites us to come to you for help and that ultimately you are the God that offers help and salvation to all who call in the name of Jesus for forgiveness of sin and for eternal life. Thank you that you're a God who cares, hears, and responds to our prayers. Lord, I want to thank you for each of the leaders that are present here at this meeting today. Thank you for their hearts and the desires to serve the people of Chicago with the gifts, talents, and abilities that you have blessed them with. I ask, Lord, that you would bless them as they lead and serve our city. Grant them wisdom, strength, perseverance, hope, and peace. Bless their families, bless their marriages and children, bless them with greater love, unity, and peace in their homes. I ask God that you would bless Mayor Brandon Johnson. Keep him in your love, care, and ways. Strengthen and encourage him in you daily and enable him to depend on you as he leads our city. I ask God that you would grow all of our leaders of Chicago closer to you as they depend on you as they seek to serve the people of this great city. Use them mightily and powerfully for your great kingdom purposes and plans for Chicago. Lord, I pray for this meeting today. Grant the leaders wisdom, peace, unity, in all of their discussions and decisions. Give them greater insight and hope into what you can do in Chicago. Use all the discussions and decisions to further your plan and purposes for Chicago, that you would continue to bless and prosper this city and the people, that we would ultimately know that you are the source of all blessings as a good God who desires to do good and to bring about good. We ultimately turn to you and ask for you to do exceedingly and abundantly more than we can ever think or imagine in Chicago. We acknowledge our need for you to work in Chicago. It is not by our might, but by your Spirit. So we ask for a fresh outpouring of your Holy Spirit in Chicago. We ask for peace in our streets, neighborhoods, homes, and schools. We ask for protection for those serving on the front line in this great city, especially for our police officers and our firefighters. We ask for blessings, prosperity, hope, peace, refreshment, and renewal for all the people of Chicago. We ask, oh Lord, and we acknowledge that this is not just our city, but Chicago is your city. May you make Chicago continue to be a place of opportunity and hope. We ask that you would do great and mighty things for your glory in your city. We ask all of these things in Jesus' mighty and holy name. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. Public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited. The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today is Mana Ruiz.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maria Cristina Ruiz. Vivo en el distrito 37 desde hace más de diez años. Durante ese tiempo, mi casero no ha hecho ninguna reparación de mantenimiento de mi edificio. Hace seis meses me informó que subiría el alquiler. Le pedí que reparara las paredes que están deterioradas debido a la humedad y las inundaciones. Su respuesta fue tendrá que desalojar el apartamento. En septiembre, un abogado empezó a llamar y a visitar mi casa para hablar sobre el desalojo. Me sorprendí mucho saber que estaba desalojándome y no tenía conocimiento previo del proceso. Mi casero no ha mostrado ningún procedimiento por el hecho de que mi familia y yo vivamos en condiciones insaludables, que frecuentemente nos enfermamos. Mientras tanto, su propiedad sigue deteriorándose. Afirma que necesita reparaciones importantes, pero ha contactado a una agencia inmobiliaria y a un abogado para iniciar el proceso de desalojo. Me están desalojando por razones incapaces y que no es culpa mía. Actualmente estoy en un tribunal de desalojo y el interés de esta situación es abrumadora. Mi familia, especialmente mis hijas, estamos aterrorizados por perder nuestro hogar. Tenemos, tenemos no poder encontrar otro apartamento que se ajuste a nuestro presupuesto, especialmente con los alquileres que están superando los $2,000. Les pido que apoyen la ordenanza de la causa justa, que proteja a los inquilinos del desalojo por razones que no son culpa de nosotros como la mía. Este problema que afecta a toda la ciudad y todos sufrimos las consecuencias de los propietarios que no viven en nuestra comunidad y no tienen ningún interés en construir un entorno mejor para nosotros, una comunidad que no es, que no se derrumbe como mis paredes de mi casa. También quiero señalar que llamé al 311 por el mal estado de mi casa, pero el inspector nunca ha aparecido. Esta ineligencia también es parte del problema. Por favor, concejales, les pido que apoyen a los inquilinos con la ordenanza de la causa justa. La vivienda no debería de ser una empresa con fines de lucro, sino un derecho humano fundamental. Gracias.
I have the English translation if I can read it for you. So my name is.
I'm sorry, but your time has expired. Thank you very kindly. Gracias. Our next speaker is Mary Kay Manahan.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Mary Kay Manahan, and I'm here today on behalf of the women construction owners and executives. WCOE applauds the mayor for his appointment of Michael McMurray as Aviation Commissioner. We remember all too well the work Mr. McMurray put in to ensure Chicago had an MWBE program after Judge Moran struck our program down. It was a challenging time for MWBEs, but Mr. McMurray guided us through with a steady hand, and we made it through. His experience developing a constitutionally defendable MWBE program will no doubt come in very handy now. As Aviation Commissioner, Mr. McMurray will be overseeing Chicago's biggest construction project. His experience in the construction industry on the private side gives WCOE confidence that this project will continue to run smoothly. Having worked for construction contractors, WCOE is certain Mr. McMurray understands the importance of paying subcontractors on time. We urge all of you to vote in favor of Mr. McMurray as Aviation Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Lee Barry.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Lee Barry. Just a quick thing about me. I've actually been a motivational consultant to the Department of Human Services. I've been a media executive, and I'm also a part-time driver for Lyft. And I've driven people over 1,000 times. I've had all kinds of conversations with Chicagoans. It's very rewarding. But let's be honest, this is not something that's going to make me rich or any of the drivers in Chicago. So let's get down to business. As I speak to you, the Illinois Drivers Alliance has been holding a rally outside City Hall, and they've been alerting all of us about one more unfair and perhaps underhanded practices of Uber. And we've reported on these many times over the years. The truth is, we don't really need any more gotcha moments to persuade members of the City Council to vote on and pass the ride-share-living-wage-and-safety ordinance. This would regulate the policies and procedures of Uber and Lyft so that drivers and riders This would regulate the policies and procedures of Uber and Lyft so that drivers and riders are treated fairly and equitably. We have a supermajority of supporters in the council, but as you know, it hasn't been brought to a vote. Without regulation, gig workers, which means independent contractors, of which there are a growing number in this city, we have no labor-related protections under the law. As a result, Uber and Lyft continue to exploit. They reduce the amount of money that drivers make. It's really gotten to a bad state because drivers are often not even making minimum wage when you take into account the expenses of maintaining and owning and fueling a vehicle. Meanwhile, the riders are being charged more and more, exorbitantly more sometimes, while we, drivers, make less and less. We understand that there have been discussions with City Council members that we don't need a legislative solution to this problem. We just need drivers to form a union. But let me remind you, and this is really important, every labor union in this country has legal protections because they are comprised of employees who are protected by the National Labor Relations Act. But as independent contractors, drivers have no legal protections. That's why before any unionization takes place, if it takes place at all...
Thank you very much, Mr. Barry. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Veronica Schwann.
Excuse me, Mr. Clerk. Before the next speaker arrives, just want to make sure that Ms. Manu Ruiz can get her testimony to one of, one of the members of my administration so that we can have the English translation. Thank you. You may continue.
No, 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 no. That gets sick, man.
Oh, okay.
No.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, hello? Hello. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Cristina Ruiz, and I have been resident of the 37 Ward for over 10 years. During this time, my landlord has failed to make any repairs or maintain the building. Six months ago, he informed me that he will be raising the rent. I request that he repairs the walls, which are deteriorating due to humidity and flooding. His response was that he will need to empty the apartment and ask me to leave. In September, a lawyer began calling and visiting my home to discuss eviction. I was shocked to learn that I was being evicted and I had no prior knowledge of the process. My landlord has shown no concern for the fact that my family and I are living in unhealthy conditions that frequently make us sick. Meanwhile, his property continues to fall apart. He claims that major repairs are needed, but has broke in a real estate agency and a lawyer to initiate, initiate the eviction process. I am being evicted for reasons that are beyond my control and that are not my fault. Currently, I am in eviction court, and the stress of this situation is overwhelming for me and my three daughters. And I am terrified of losing our home. We fear that we won't be able to find another apartment within our budget, especially with rents now exceeding $2,000 a month. I am asking you to support the Use Case Ordinance, which will protect tenants from evictions for reasons that are not the fault, has, is the case with me. This is a citywide issue, and all of us are suffering for the consequences of predatory landlords who don't live in our communities and don't have no interest in building a better environment for us all, a community that won't fall apart like the walls of my building. I also want to note that I call 311 regarding the poor condition of the building, but the inspector never showed up. This neglect is part of the problem. Please, council members, I ask you to stand with tenants like me by supporting the Use Case Ordinance. Housing should not be a profit. Driving enterprise is a basic human right. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Veronica Schwann.
My name is Veronica Schwann, and I'm a high school English teacher at Curie High School. Thank you to Alderwoman Gutierrez for helping my colleague and I bring some of our AP Government and Journalism students here today. Yes. This AP Gov class has been working with Alderwoman Gutierrez's office to raise awareness about safety issues on South Pulaski Road. Curie is at the intersection of Pulaski and Archer, two very busy streets, and like many CPS students, most of our students walk and commute via CTA to school. South Pulaski is especially unsafe. It is a wide road with little permanent infrastructure, and many drivers are willing to take the odds that no one will be there to give them consequences for their speeding, running red lights, and drag racing. People have been killed by this behavior, and it makes our students feel unsafe commuting to school. Please continue to work with the state and county to make Pulaski safer for pedestrians and drivers. I also want to ask you all to vote against the proposed SNAP curfew. Study after study has shown that curfews do not reduce crime or victimization. This city is for teens just as much it is for adults. I grew up in a small town in Wisconsin. Not a great public speak. I grew up in a small town in Wisconsin where there was nothing to do, and when we would come to Chicago, I remember being jealous of the high schoolers who got to live here and enjoy it year-round. It makes me disappointed to see City Council thinking about taking teens' ability to enjoy their city away from them. The possible exception for ticketed events is inequitable as not all teens have the ability to purchase them. Not every neighborhood in Chicago has ample places for teens to spend free time, and many of my students love just hanging out in Chinatown, walking among the skyscrapers and feeling the energy of downtown, and of course, taking pictures with their friends. I also have a lot of questions about how teens are supposed to keep up with or even know about SNAP curfews when they are implemented. It is wrong to put the burden to know about a SNAP curfew or face consequences on teens. I ask you all to remember that studies show that curfew, curfews do not work to reduce crime, and remember that we should be making Chicago more inclusive, not less, including for teenagers on the cusp of adulthood. Please vote against the proposed SNAP curfew. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Alma Weiser.
A strong creative economy is a sign of a healthy city. My name is Alma Weiser. I am the director of Heaven Gallery established in Wicker Park in 1997. Our gallery uses a commerce-to-culture model of a retail shop that offers a cultural experience to the general public. In 2024, we served an intergenerational audience of 25,000 artists, creatives, families, youth, and seniors. Our demographics are 53% tourism, 12% Wicker Park residents, and 35% every neighborhood citywide. As gentrification continues to diminish our authenticity, we must be better stewards of our cultural narrative. Preservation isn't limited to architecture, but also we must protect sacred community spaces that tell the story of who we are. It's only through ownership that we can achieve self-determination, and so for seven years, I have been raising money to buy our liberation from market speculation through Equity Arts, a project to buy our building and redevelop it into the center for the creative economy. So Equity Arts is an economic model for community stewardship of impactful real estate that supports wealth-building arts ecosystem. My research is on the creative economy as a social good multiplier that creates long-term economic prosperity, public safety, and ec, I'm sorry, public safety and mental health. So we are part of the Elevated Chicago Cohort for ETODs. We are part of the Chicago Community Trust Cohort for Emerging Community Wealth Building Models, and we launched a Social Impact Fund. So far, we have raised $1 million through philanthropy and community investors, and in 2024, DPD awarded us a $5 million grant for catalytic investment. So a developer is now seeking a rezoning for our building, and Alderman Lasbada has presented three proposals to our community, all of which replace community spaces with windowless studio apartments. Density will not make our corridor safer or lead to long-term economic vibrancy. The arts have long been the answer to many of our social problems, and a cultural community hubs are the wave of the future. If we don't want teens to take over, if we don't want teen takeovers, then we must invest in third spaces that foster creativity and youth to reach their full potential. Thank you. Should this zoning request be brought to vote for 1550 North Milwaukee Avenue, we ask that you stand in solidarity with us and use your power of oversight to deny any zoning change for an extractive development that would directly harm our community. This is a call for our city government to collaborate across all departments. If DPD awards us $5 million, then our Aldermen should work with us towards this commitment. I ask you all, does not the right hand know what the left hand is doing if our city government...
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Thumann Jay.
Good morning. My name is Gerald Gary. My middle name is Thurman, and I'm the owner of the Avalon Regal Theater in South Shore. Thank you for your time today. I stand before you not just as a steward of one of Chicago's most treasured cultural landmarks, but as a representative of the youth, the arts community, and the South Shore neighborhood. I'm here to ask, what needs to be done for the Avalon Regal Theater to receive the same level of support the city has extended to other cultural and theater projects? Over the past 11 years, I've personally invested millions of dollars into preserving this historic landmark. Having taken on a 2008 building court case upon purchasing the property in 2014, without any final financial assistance from the city, I invested enough capital in the regal to have the entire case dismissed as early as next month. Our development plans are complete, and my vision for the area is grand. With the right funding in place, we hope to break ground by next spring and reopen for the building's 100-year anniversary in 2027. Thank you. Through consultants, I've submitted repeated applications for programs like Invest Southwest and Adopt a Landmark, only to be denied, ignored, or stonewalled through Aldermanic prerogative. This is despite attracting high-profile investors, including Kanye West and Kim Kardashian, and assembling the same architectural and engineering team that redeveloped the recent Rimova Theater. Still, no city support. Instead, what we faced is obstruction, denials of grants with no explanation, weaponization of city departments to suppress activity at the regal, including me being arrested for filming a Christian music video with children from the Mayfair Dance Academy. A Lions Gate production by 50 Cent's Power approved through the city, shut down without calls. Police shutting down a PPE giveaway and census signup event, trying to take the building from me through the taxes. Repeated police raids at the request of Alderman Michelle A. Harris, who has told residents I am not even the owner of the building, a blatant lie, created a fake movie studio called Regal Mile Studios that egregiously infringed upon our trademark intellectual property and misled the public to believe hundreds of jobs would be created with what was only a reelection ploy. Let me be clear, the real reason the Regal Theater isn't open isn't because of me or the community's desire to see it open. It is because of Alderman Michelle A. Harris. We have sued the city. We have sued Alderman Harris. You can go to avalonregal.com to read the lawsuits, avalonregal.com/downloadfiles. There's a donate button on there as well, and thank you for your time. God bless.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is the Chicago Conservative.
Good morning, City Council. First thing I want to do is thank the DOJ for opening up an investigation on the mayor's insane, out-of-control DEI hiring. You said in a recent interview that black people don't just look out for ourselves, but for everyone else as well. Well, clearly, they're not getting the memo because they're destroying downtown and they're destroying the city with things like teen takeover. And when you say things like this, it just makes you look more incompetent and racist as a mayor. You need to start pushing more law and order in the city of Chicago. Help the police do their job. I am asking you all to vote for the curfew and make the curfew time permanent for teens. Hold the parents accountable as well. Teens are doing majority of the crime, and you know it, Brandon Johnson. They're even putting it on YouTube. They're openly mocking you. They're mocking you on Instagram and YouTube and all social media platforms, and you allow it every single day. Now allegedly, inside sources tell me that you're going to use your $840 million in cash bonds to try and get reelected. Well, I'm here to tell you that that's not happening. I am demanding a forensic audit from Pam Bundy and Cash Patel for you to come here, for you guys to come here and do a forensic audit on the mayor of Chicago. We have been calling for the Attorney General and the leader of the FBI for months now. Please do not forget about us. Harboring illegal aliens in America who commit crimes is a violation of the Constitution. I hope Trump and his team are listening and take action as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Esther Martinez.
Hello. Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Esther Martinez. I am a housing organizer with Northwest Center in the northwest side of the city. Thank you so much for your time. I am going to read Minerva's testimony with her permission. She is here today to speak on behalf of many tenants that have been evicted for reasons that is not the fault, and I am going to share her personal housing experience. My name is Minerva Garcia. I live in Hermosa, but I grew up in Belmont Crane. In just the past three years, I have had three different addresses. Today, I want to speak to you not just as a resident of Chicago, but as someone who knows firsthand what housing insecurity really looks like for low-income immigrant families like mine. My family has faced housing instability for as long as I can remember. I was eight years old when we were first evicted. We didn't know our rights as immigrants. We learned to stay quiet, not cause, not cause problems, and just accept whatever our landlord said. That changed in 2020, when we finally stood up for ourselves and reported serious code violations in our building. But instead of addressing the problems, our landlord retaliated. He raised the rent only for us and then took us to court when we started asking questions. That eviction process took over a year. My mother suffered constant migraines and had sleepless nights before every hearing. We couldn't afford a fancy attorney like our landlord could, and in the end, we lost. We were pushed out of the neighborhood we ever called home, Belmont Crane. Not just because of retaliation, but because we were priced out. We ended up in a small rundown house in West Humboldt Park, next to an open-air drug market. Yet, we could not afford the rent. My family was severely cost-burdened, spending over 50% of our income on rent. A few months later, we noticed the floors were rotting, the bathtub was sinking, the basement regularly flooded, and a foul smell crept in through the vents. When I looked at the property, I found more than 50 code violations in just two years. And when we asked the landlord for repairs, she told us, "If you don't like it, move out." But we couldn't. We have nowhere else to go. We tried about calling the city again, but we remembered what happened last, last time: eviction, court displacement. We didn't report it, not because we didn't want to, but because we couldn't afford the consequence. This is what it means to live in fear, to know your rights but still feel powerless, to choose silence over safety because there are no real protections for tenants like us. I am urging you today...
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Eric Winslow.
Hey, how y'all doing? This is Mr. Winslow right here. Mr. Winslow right here. Just want to give a big ups to Mr. George, Danny C., Zo, you know, the Red, all that stuff, you know, just got to get a shout out to them, a big up to them. Donald, how y'all doing? Okay, this is about the racism that's going on in Chicago, discrimination. This is trippy good stuff. This is real trippy good stuff, ain't it? Yeah. Racism.
That's right. Stick to racism.
It's racism. Come on now. We see it. You can't sweep this under a rug. You can't... Where's the timer? Usually, I have a timer up there, but forget about it.
Keep on racism. Keep doing it.
Racism. It's about racism. I'm experiencing it. What about that? What's going on with the CB, uh, Chicago Police following me? For what? Because I'm trying to pursue the happiness? That's racism. I have recordings. I have video of it. You sweating me? I pay tax, I work, I donate money, I look out, I do the best that I can, and I will, I helps out the people that's going through racism because we all going through this, and this is nasty and disgusting. This, y'all know this. And the land and the spirits, for y'all see, y'all tell them about what I experienced. They know that nature is watching. We are part of nature or something. You... It's racism because if you hating on us, you hating on the animals. If you hating on the animals, you hating on us, the animals of the land. But I don't want to go over y'all head with that. This is racism with this discrimination. I can't get a job. What I'm supposed to do? But you want me to pay for my ticket, though. You want me to get my car out. How I'm supposed to get a job?
Go back to racism.
And yes. And what about the undocumented immigrants? The undocumented immigrants coming over here? You know what I'm saying? That's not right. It's not adding up right. You cannot overwrite. You can't hate on this. You can't hate on this. Racism is not right. You know what I'm saying? I just came up here, and it was a spear of the moment, and we gonna get this right because y'all know these animals is watching all us. I'm watching. It's the spirits of our great ones, you know? The words of Malcolm X, "Who told y'all to hate us?" Who told y'all? Who did? Y'all stop this. It's enough for everybody. We could work this out. Be very, very careful on disrespecting us, and that's it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is David Levine.
Thank you all. I am David Levine, resident of Rogers Park. I've been an Uber driver for about almost 10 years. I applaud Alderman Silverman's efforts to investigate Uber and their, um, their mis... Sorry about that. Their taking taxes that inappropriately and the need to refund that to the people that have been paying it. The other issue is that the rideshare living wage and safety ordinance. It's been languishing here in the council for, I believe, a couple of years, and it's time to move it forward. I am but one voice, but there are something like about 80,000 rideshare drivers in the city. Some are full-time, like myself, some are part-time, but we deserve to make a living wage. In the time that I've been driving, I have only, we have never seen an increase in our earnings. We have only seen decreases. It seems like Uber has determined that we should not be making more than $15 an hour. We do not know how they figure that or how they figure the money that we are earning. It varies from ride to ride, from passenger to passenger. What riders are paying varies from ride to ride. That's not right. We want a, want you guys, and we encourage you guys, move forward on the ordinance and let drivers earn a living wage that we can actually afford to provide the service to the citizens of Chicago. We move Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have time to sign up for the public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you for all of our public speakers. Before we get to our resolutions, there are a number of acknowledgements that are before us, but I do want to acknowledge former Alder of the 30th Ward, Mr. Ariel Raboyes. If you could please stand. Thank you for being here today. We do have 10 acknowledgements. First is Alderman Yancey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor today to recognize May 2025 as Haitian-American Month with this body and members of the Chicago's Haitian-American community. The 1791 through 1804 Haitian Revolution made Haiti the first sovereign state in the Caribbean, the second republic in the Americas, the first country in the Americas to officially abolish slavery, and the only country established via slave revolt. It's important to also acknowledge the ongoing political and humanitarian crisis in Haiti, including displacement, insecurity, and reduced foreign aid, while honoring the Haitian diaspora's strength and continued advocacy for Haitian-led solutions rooted in dignity and self-determination. Haiti's connection to the city of Chicago is well-known, as our founder, Jean Baptiste Point-Duxab, is widely recognized as Chicago's first non-Indigenous resident, and as fifth Ward Alderman, I have the distinction of representing a portion of South DuSable Lakeshore Drive. And with that, I have a constant reminder of Haiti's story, which begins with revolution and lives with the resolve and resilience of her people. On May 18th, Haitians around the world celebrate Haitian Flag Day, commemorating the adoption of the Haitian flag in 1803 as a symbol of unity and liberation. The day is celebrated by Haitian communities around the world as a powerful expression of identity and resistance, and today we recognize this nation's story in this body. Thank you.
Thank you for the acknowledgement of Haitian Heritage Month. Alderman Yancey, Chair of Members of the Haitian Community, if you're here, please stand and be recognized. Let's give him a round of applause, please. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Dow, who will acknowledge City Club Gymnastics Academy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask the members of the City Club Gymnastics Academy to please stand. This academy was founded in 2015 by world champion gymnast Natalya Yurchenko, who creates a space for all to excel in the world of gymnastics and operates out of 2028 South Michigan Avenue and XS Tennis Facility at 5336 South State Street in the 3rd Ward. With us today as our guests is Natalya Yurchenko, who is the head coach and owner of City Club, Carol Manor, co-owner of the club, Igor Skalyavov, co-owner, and with us are gymnasts Camille Thompson, Kiara Javier, Cameron Javier, Rebecca Colagluto, Isla Lazari, and Phoenix Rogers. And, Mr. President and members of the City Council, this group of gymnasts won the Team Illinois State Champion in Level 10, which is the highest competitive level in Illinois. This was a historical win for the club and Chicago gymnastics over many years. We also have members who are individual state champions in the vault, the beam, and the floor exercise, and we have regional qualifiers, Kiara Javier, Camille Thompson, Rebecca Colagluto, and Cameron Javier. Six of the gymnasts qualified for the national championship, and Isla Lazari qualified for U.S. Classic, which is the final step to qualify for the U.S. National Team. This event will be held at the Now Arena in Hoffman Estates on July 19th. We congratulate all of these athletes. We wish them success, and congratulations to your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alder Woman Dow. And now, for the 10th anniversary of Straight From the Goal, the Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Real briefly, before we get to that, check with your team. I just want to give a five-second moment of silence. You did a great proclamation, a resolution for the Reverend Dr. L.K. Curry, 98 years old, passing away, pastor of Emmanuel Baptist Church and Christian Academy, where our own Stephanie Coleman, Alderman Stephanie Coleman, attended. So if we could just take a three-second...
Moment of silence, please.
...moment of silence. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Before I start talking about Raven, I just want to acknowledge, you can raise your hands and I have to stand, our young men from Urban Prep are back here today. They're following this curfew ordinance, they're doing a civics class, and they're following this thing closely and got some ideas, so they're back here again. I just want to acknowledge them and raise their hands.
Thank you for being here again.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me that privilege. Now, Raven Smith, will you please stand? Thank you so much. This young lady, Raven Smith, as you all know, Chicago is the greatest city in the world.
Yes, we are.
It is referred to by some as the second city, the windy city, and shy town, but to her generation, it is fondly known as the Goal. She created the phrase movement, Straight From the Goal, 10 years ago, to dispel the belief that Chicago is by nature a violent city that has no interest in creating a safe community where citizens can live in peace and harmony. She was determined to make a difference by changing the image of her great city and rejecting the name Chirac. Raven, she graduated from Morgan Park High School, where she started Straight From the Goal while she was at Morgan Park High School. She graduated cumulard from the University of Missouri in Columbia and a member of, And is a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, if I get slapped next door here. She's currently earning her second degree in textile apparel management product development, created Straight From the Goal. The Goal, while she, when she created was 17-year-old. It's about civic pride that prepare her to transfer the negative images associated with the city into something more positive, as well as she mentor other young people as well. So this is the 10th anniversary. A lot of people start things just because of feelings, and when you're a young person that starts something in high school and 10 years later, it's still going, the city of Chicago has to acknowledge it. And Raven, we thank you for your positive inspiration and everything that you're doing to show that our young people, you're the best of our youth, and we got great young people, just like... Just like the men at Urban Prep, I always want to make sure that we're showing the best of our youth. I want to recognize her family that came out, her mother, Raina, her father, Josh, and her friends and everybody that came out to support her. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will offer some deference to Morgan Park. So the Chair recognizes Alderman Mosley. Oh, I thought you wanted to speak. I'm sorry. Okay. My apologies. Separate issue. Okay, so you have something? Okay, all right. Okay, then for the, thank you again, Alderman Moore. For the 50th anniversary of our Vietnam veteran commemoration, the Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. It is an honor to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. This is personal to me, just like many of you. You have family members that served. My dad and uncle served in Vietnam, and we have some Vietnam veterans that are currently in the room, and I would like for them to stand so that we can acknowledge them. Those that are in the room, please, veterans? The Vietnam War, solemn occasion, but also long overdue moment of recognition and respect for a generation of veterans who gave so much and received far too little in return. To the men and women who served in Vietnam, you answered your country's call during a difficult and divided time. You did your duty with courage and conviction, even when the nation you returned to struggled to understand the war or to honor those who fought it. Too many of you came home not to parades or praise, but to silence, indifference, or even open hostility. This is a stain on our national conscience, and is why today and every day moving forward, we say what should have been said decades ago: Welcome home, thank you, we honor you, and we respect you. In April, I had the privilege of hosting an event to recognize our Vietnam veterans with commemorative pins. That event was not just symbolic, it was a small gesture of gratitude to begin correcting a great wrong. We gathered not only to honor your service, but to say thank that your city sees you and values you. As a combat veteran myself, I hope, I hold deep respect for those who paved the way before me, who endured the unimaginable, and who came back and continue to serve their communities despite the hardships they faced. You are a testament to resilience, strength, and patriotism. And in fact, just this morning, we honored Purple Heart recipients with an unveiling of a sign that shows Chicago is a Purple Heart city. This sign stands proudly in front of City Hall for every resident to see. I want to thank the Mayor's Office and Director of Veteran Affairs, Kevin Barzess, for helping put this event together. It was also an honor to be among Purple Heart veterans who also served in Vietnam veteran, like former Alderman Jim Balser, and if he's in the room, I'd like him to stand as well. I think he left. He's retired, so. The 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War is a reminder that time does not diminish sacrifice, and while we cannot change the past, we can ensure that future generations never forget your service or your story. To all of our Vietnam veterans, thank you for your courage, thank you for your sacrifice, and thank you for showing us what it means to serve with honor, even when that honor wasn't given in return. Today, your city stands with you gracefully and proudly. Welcome home, God bless you, and God bless America.
And now for the acknowledgement of the 50th anniversary of Whitney Young High School, Chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm proud to stand here, joined by Vice Mayor Walter Burnett, home Alderperson and fellow alumni Alders Nicole Lee and Monique Scott, in honoring the 50-year anniversary of Whitney M. Young Magnet High School. The school was named in honor of Whitney M. Young Jr., a civil rights leader and former executive director of the National Urban League, whose legacy of advocacy for racial and economic justice continues to inspire generations of students. Whitney Young has produced trailblazers in diverse fields like former First Lady Michelle Obama, NASA astronaut Joan Higginbottom, and professional tennis player Katrina Adams. In my recollection, also has Quentin Richardson in the NBA and Russell Maryland in pro football. But today, I am very excited to have three illustrious individuals with us here today, if you wouldn't mind standing. We are joined by Principal Ricky Harris. Give him a round of applause. Very well-known leader in our city, so thank you for your leadership. We have with us Ms. Valerie Spain. She is the girls' flag football coach, a state championship-winning team. Thank you very much. And forgive me, but my favorite guest of the day is Ms. Destiny Jackson. And may I say, Miss Illinois Basketball 2025, member of the girls' basketball team for four city championships. Give it up for Destiny. Give it up for Destiny. Thank you for being here. Today, we honor Whitney Young as well as the most influential, best institution of learning across the United States of America, not just the city of Chicago. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. Thank you. And all the best, Destiny, and the next level. If you could have saw her play on that city championship game, I believe it was 42 points in that single game, one of the best performances of an athlete that we've seen in the state of Illinois. Congratulations, Ms. Jackson. So now for the acknowledgement of Africa Day, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Clay.
Mr. President, I rise on behalf of my colleague, Alderwoman Maria Haddan, to recognize Africa Day in the city of Chicago on May 25th. As you all know, all of civilization you all comes from Africa. And we have a duty and a responsibility to make sure that we are recognizing the history and the legacy of this amazing continent. So we have had the opportunity to work with so many different cultures that come out of the African continent. The city of Chicago is home to many different neighbors from all over the continent of Africa, and because of that, we have one of the most diverse, amazing cities that has been poured into from the African continent. I want to recognize the guests that we have here, Dr. Oliver Kamanzi, Dr. Anna Vicky Castillo, Eunice M. Escobar, Kenny Kennessy, Adriana Acosta, and Pastor Joseph Roney. If you could please stand to be recognized. Recognizing Africa Day in the city of Chicago provides an important opportunity to celebrate the heritage and achievements of the African continent and its diaspora, and to reaffirm our commitment to fostering mutually beneficial relationships and partnerships. Acknowledging Africa Day aligns with the city of Chicago's dedication to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to recognizing the invaluable contribution of all its residents. The theme for this year in 2025 is Year of Justice for Africans and People of African Descent Through Reparations. I just want to acknowledge that, as we are talking about that very locally in our city, I am honored to stand and make sure that our neighbors all across the African continent feel the love that we have for them in our homes. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you again, Alderwoman Clay. Now Alderwoman Taylor, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Taylor in celebration of the Diet High School Boys Basketball Championship Team. Alderwoman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can the Diet High School students please stand? This is the 2025 Illinois School Association State Champion, the Diet Eagles. I am so proud of you all, and I am so blessed that you all here. You all need to remember that in 2015, these were the students that you all counted out. These are the ones that you forgot about. And there were 12 brave souls, which includes the mayor of the city of Chicago, who said no more in our community and saved this high school. And so it's just befitting that I get to be you all's elected official, and I am so proud of you. Principal Butler, thank you for the work that you've done with these young people. I want to also acknowledge Coach Jamal Gill, Christopher Williams, Darrell Bullock, Ronald Thomas, Nathan Townsend, Kamai Harris, Devonte Limbskin, and Jamal Gill II. To the young people, our players, Amari Brown, Matthew Wilson, Kristen Love, Amari Taylor, Ricky Coleman, Jamar Brown, Amaris Brown, Cornell Dunbar, Jaden McKinnon, Mackay Harris, Devon Shelton, John T. Duncan, Jacoby Johnson, Zaheer Tabari, and Dillian Fountain. To the managers, Jesus Mitchell, Kayla, Ray Lynn, Naveya, and Shamira. I am so proud of you all. God bless you all. Know that it is not over for Diet. We still got y'all backs. Keep on fighting the good fight. I am so proud. And special shout-out to Coco. I see you, Mr. Bennett. I see y'all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Taylor, and thank you for reminding the world that there's nothing illegal about fighting for black people. So the Chair, the Chair happily recognizes Alder Jesse Fuentes, who wishes to acknowledge the 47th Annual Puerto Rican Peoples' Day Parade. The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are gearing up for Puerto Rican festivities in the city of Chicago, particularly on Division Street, in which we will be celebrating the 30th anniversary of the Puerto Rican steel flags erected under former Alderman Billy Ocasio, and the 25th anniversary of the National Museum for Puerto Rican Arts and Culture, the only national museum outside of Puerto Rico in the entire globe. And so today, I want to acknowledge that we are celebrating, celebrating the 47th anniversary of the Puerto Rican Peoples' Day Parade, but more importantly, to acknowledge the work of former Alderman Billy Ocasio. When he sat in this very seat representing the 26th Ward, he fought for two statues of Dr. Pedro Albizu Campos to be put in the park. And there was such a strong movement against those statues. And because he couldn't get those statues, he delivered the largest Puerto Rican steel flags in the world for Puerto Ricans in Chicago on Division Street, under his leadership. And today, he serves as the president and CEO of the National Museum for Puerto Rican Arts and Culture. And our 47th-day annual parade, we will be celebrating former Alderman Billy Ocasio. I invite all of my colleagues here to step off on Division Street with us on Division and Campbell. But more importantly, it is because of people like Billy, Luis Gutierrez, and many people before him, that we have five Puerto Rican alderpeople right here in this chamber today, elected by constituents of the city of Chicago. I'm happy to represent the 26th Ward, the largest Puerto Rican community in the city. And if you know anything about Puerto Ricans, we celebrate, we celebrate for a long time. We celebrate multiple times a year, and we are just getting started. So I invite everyone to join us on June 14th. Thank you, Mr. President.
We'll be there. We'll be there. Okay, thank you. We're almost there, just a couple of more acknowledgements. With that, for the acknowledgement of the advocates, the student advocates particularly at Curie High School, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to recognize some of the AP Government Class, as well as just journalism students here today from the 14th Ward's Curie High School. Don't be shy. These students are here to represent their entire school and their shared goal to improve the pedestrian and traffic safety along Pulaski Road. It's been an utmost experience listening and working with these students on what Kansas City and myself could do to make our community safer. These are just some of the many amazing youth in the 14th Ward that are working to build their future. A special thank you to Mr. Jimenez, Mrs. Shuen, and the Southwest Collective for their dedication in working with these students.
They sat down too fast for you. Please stand again. Your alderman was trying to take a picture of you all. Please stand again. There you go. Thank you, Alderwoman Gutierrez, for reminding the world that it's a righteous call to advocate for the Latino community, and thank you for your bravery and your, and your courage. So with that, our final acknowledgement is for recognizing the unfortunate passing of a 41st Ward resident, Joe, Mr. Joe Ruiz. And with that, the Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. President. To the family and friends of Joseph Arthur Ruiz and our good friend Alderman Raboyas, would you please stand? Colleagues, today, we take a moment to honor a truly extraordinary man, Joseph Arthur Ruiz, a proud Chicagoan, devoted educator, and a relentless, relentless advocate for equity and opportunity. Born in 1947 in New York and raised right here in Chicago, Joe's life was defined by service, service to his family, to his community, and to generations of young people who were often overlooked and underserved. He began breaking barriers in 1960 on the baseball fields of Humboldt Park and Eckerd Park alongside his father, Kareeb, Kareeb, not just coaching baseball, but building bridges between communities. Joseph's legacy is deep, lasting impact. From helping found the academy of Off the Streets, to champion bilingual education in our public schools, to creating groundbreaking dropout prevention programs, Joe changed the trajectory of countless lives. And after the passing of his father, he carried on the leadership role of the Puerto Rican Congress, preserving culture, celebrating identity, and creating platforms for youth to thrive, not just in the classroom, but through art, music, and community. His work went beyond policy. It was personal, and that's what made Joe special. He didn't just advocate for change, he embodied it. To the Ruiz family, here with us today, you have our deepest condolences, more importantly, our deepest gratitude. Your husband, your father, your grandfather made this city, this city a better place. On behalf of the 41st Ward and the Chicago Council, we honor his life, we recognize his legacy, and we commit to remembering his contributions, not just in words, but through continued actions. To the Ruiz family, and to my good friend Alderman Raboyas, who was a mentor to myself, and to my friend Chairman Villegas, who's helped with this as well. We also introduce a resolution for your father, and you should note that today is now Joseph Arthur Ruiz Day, and thank you so much, and thank you for this. Thank you.
Yes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to stand here today to recognize and celebrate the life, legacy, and enduring impact of a true community giant, Joe Ruiz. The resolution has my full support, and I know I speak for many of my colleagues when I say Joe Ruiz represents the very best of our city. Alongside his father, the great Carlos Garibe Ruiz, Joe co-founded the Puerto Rican Congress Mutual Aid, powerful force in organizing, advocating, and uplifting the Puerto Rican community during some of the city's most turbulent times. Joe began his lifelong service in the 60s, breaking down racial barriers on the baseball field and coaching Little League at Eckerd Park and Humboldt Park. He was not only a coach, but a champion, both literally and figuratively. He played and coached in Stan Musial Baseball Tournament, where the Puerto Rican Congress baseball team took home the national championship in the mid-'70s. His brother-in-law, Ron Pauley, who's here with us today, was right there on the field with him. I also want to recognize and share well wishes to his sister, Sandy Ruiz. We appreciate her partnership and collaboration in the 36th Ward and all that she's done for our community. A proud graduate of Wells High School and a product of CPS, Joe pursued higher education, devoted his life to helping others achieve theirs. In the '70s, he helped create the academy Off the Streets to give young people a second chance to educate, at education and careers. He also was instrumental in bringing bilingual teachers from Puerto Rico to Roberto Clemente School, High School, at a time when our public schools desperately needed representation and cultural connection. Joe was one of the first Puerto Rican administrators in CPS. He fought for bilingual education, civil rights, and expanded opportunity. With degrees in history, counseling, and a host of educational credentials, Joe never stopped pushing to make sure Latino students and the support they needed to thrive. In the '80s and into the '90s, he led Chicago's first academic alternative schools program, re-engaging students at risk of dropping out and giving them a path forward. But Joe's legacy goes far beyond the classroom. He was a family man devoted to his beloved wife Carol, their four children, and nine grandchildren. To them, I extend my deepest condolences. I know the pride you must feel and the weight of the loss you carry. Joe also gave his heart to his faith and community, leading music workshops each April to celebrate the cultural and contributions of Puerto Ricans in Chicago. Today, we remember Joe Ruiz as more than an educator. He was a civil rights leader, a mentor, a builder of opportunity, and a bridge for generations of Puerto Rican, Puerto Ricans and Hispanic Americans making Chicago their home. He opened doors that had been closed. He brought light where others saw limitation, and he did this with humility, heart, and purpose. Joe Ruiz, thank you. Your city honors you, and your legacy lives on every life you've touched. May God bless your memory, and may Chicago always remember your name. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you again. Thank you. And now there are three resolutions today. We will honor former Corporation Council, Mr. James D. Montgomery, Sr. We are celebrating Jewish-American Heritage Month. We're also, we are also celebrating Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. With that, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules with the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of time, we will forego the reading of the resolutions. It will go straight to the remarks. The first resolution again is honoring the first black corporate council, Mr. James D. Montgomery. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to be associated with this resolution. Today, I am so proud, and I'm so honored to have you sitting in that chair. You have, over your distinguished, eloquent career, done so many wonderful things for people, to help them, to get them out of trouble, to help them when they need the information. And you just have been a beautiful husband, a beautiful father, and a beautiful friend to many people. And I just don't understand how so many people can stand on your shoulders and you can carry them all, but you have. So today, I'm telling you, thank you. I want you to know that it hasn't gone unnoticed about what an exceptional person you are and what you've done, not just for other people, but for the city of Chicago, that you stepped down from a very lucrative business to come down here and to carry Chicago and to help Chicago move forward. And even today, as you have left that part of your life, you still continue to help and move things forward. You're currently in your current role over at Trinity United Church. You have helped the church, the pastor, the ministers, the members of that congregation, and you're starting on a new journey to rebuild a whole corridor. You didn't have to do that, because it's taking time away from everything that you do, and you put your all into that at the 95th Street and Cottage Corridor. So today, I'm super grateful to tell you how much I love you and appreciate you for giving your time today for a community to build something and rebuild a whole entire corridor. And I am, will never be able to stop singing your praises about your kind demeanor, how patient you are with people, how you give them the time to make mistakes, and then when we make mistakes, you just say, come on, I'm gonna help you get up. I'm gonna pull you out of this pothole that you got in. I can't appreciate you enough for being that person who has been humbled and humbled himself for a better cause, the cause of, of a church and rebuilding a community. You are an amazing person, and again, I'm giving you your flowers while you're here so you know how much I love you and I care about you, and I will forever sing your praises about what you have given, because you have given so much to so many people. Today, I stand here honored and proud to say thank you for you being an exceptional leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I undoubtedly stand in support of this resolution, but more importantly, Mr. Montgomery, I met you a little later in life, personally, but I knew you early in life, because I was around people like Reverend Clay Evans, who spoke of a Jim Montgomery. I was around Lou Myers, one of my mentors, who spoke of you and just talked about you. And when I had the opportunity to meet you, but what touched my heart even more is that out of the blue, I called you and just to talk to you, and you invited me into your home. You listen to young people. You listen to young people. You give them a seat at the table and a voice. And know that your life and your legacy will live on in so many. And it's because of men like you who encourage us to make sure we And it's because of men like you who encourage us to make sure we listen to young people. That is why I bring people, young men like from Urban Prep down here, young women from Raven, so that our young people can have a voice. You have added so much value to this city that I don't think the number of people that can talk in this council can say it all. So I just want to say thank you. I thank your family for sharing you with this city. You are a legend, man, a legend. Every lawyer that I've talked to, Andre Grant, Jim Montgomery, these people love and respect you, and they've been a blessing to me, so that when we talk and whatever we do, it's because of something that Jim Montgomery poured into us directly, or you poured into someone else that poured what you poured in them into us. It's gonna continue to go and go and go. And so, I love you so much, I appreciate you, and anyway, we can continue to be supportive of your efforts and doing, because you're doing, as Alderman Chairman Harris said, you're doing more and more. You can guide us, lead us, let us do some of that heavy lifting. So don't hesitate to call upon us, and I mean that. Love you so much and appreciate you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Mr. Montgomery, when I think of civil rights attorneys and the prominence of them, two people come to mind for me. One was mentioned by my colleague Alderman Moore, Lou Myers, and the other is you. And I will say, when I first started out in government as a young, much younger, many years ago, in the Harold Washington administration, sometimes I would sneak down to the city council from my offices in the planning department, or when I was in the mayor's office and on the fifth floor, come down and watch city council meetings. And it always filled me with pride to see you sitting in that seat, handling the city's business in what I would call a quiet storm way, and I appreciated that. I also want to thank you for reaching out to me when I was thinking about the South Loop High School, and how to think about the boundaries and the reasons why we were trying to create this school. And also for your counsel on repopulating what you call the inner-city Savior Buildings. And so, that has stayed with me, and something that I utilize when I think about the importance of always grounding in, keeping grounded, people and parents and community. So I want to say you have impressed a lot on people's lives. You may not even know that, but there are people who care deeply for your counsel, your observations, and your thoughts, and I want to thank you so much for being here today and that we have an opportunity to celebrate you and your accomplishments and your commitment to the city of Chicago. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this resolution. I concur with all of my colleagues on all of the things that were said. Mr. Montgomery, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for not only being the first African-American Corporation Counsel, but also working for the first African-American mayor of the city of Chicago. And when you think about that time when Harold Washington was in, and you think about all of the legal battles that was going on, somewhat similar, somewhat similar to what we have going on here, all of the jousting and back and forth, dealing with some of the lawyers that was in city council, you can't do anything but admire how you positioned the mayor to be able to defend the city's seat, to defend that seat as mayor. As I told you earlier, when we was talking, you need to write a book about all of those different things that you went through and how you competed and how you out-legalt all of those guys in the city council at that time. You really made a lot of people in the city of Chicago proud. I'm sure that a lot of African-American folks was looking at that at that time and decided that they wanted to be a lawyer, right? Because of the legal knowledge and skills that you put forth to position the mayor to be able to get his agenda forward, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to yourself, thank you to your family. I know it wasn't easy, but you did it, and they say if it don't kill you, it makes you stronger, and you came out 10 times stronger than you did when you first became Corporation Counsel. Congratulations to you, and your legacy will live on, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. The Chair recognizes Alderman Yancey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to extend congratulations for the recognition of Fifth Ward resident Jim Montgomery. Had the pleasure of meeting earlier today, and you're a hero. I mean, your work, you know, defending, not defending, litigating the deaths of Fred Hampton and Mark Clark, and also Latanya Hagerty, put you in a very special place in this city. And I'm just grateful for your support for black folks here, for justice in the city of Chicago. And I told you silently, I've been reading Fire on the Prairie for the second time, and I think about your work in that moment, and it just really means a lot to have you in this box today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixchel Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd also like to rise in support of this resolution. It doesn't go by in a day nor a community when we have not felt the effects of the Mayor Washington administration in the many, many great ordinances that the administration delivered. As a representative of the 25th Ward, we want to recognize what Mr. Montgomery and the Washington administration did for us to even have access to city jobs as a Latino community. A lot of those minority MWBE programs that were installed, to this day, have given access to communities like us that are, continue to be disenfranchised, demonized, and excluded. We, more than ever today, must protect those programs and could not capitulate to people who do not believe in diversity and want to impose by force and violence supremacy that only going to make our communities more divided than ever. I also like to thank the administration, because there were actually very tough battles at the time as well, to deliver to the city of Chicago or sanctuary city status was something that we will be forever grateful for, the mayor of the people, Mayor Washington. And I'm in a coalition, like in the 25th Ward, a coalition that continues to believe that unity among working people, especially black and brown communities, is not only possible, but necessary in a time like this. So as a representative of a community that built a coalition with Mayor Washington, representing the 25th Ward, I rise in support, and we must remember with actions the legacy of our great mayor, Harold Washington. I'm glad that we give recognition to that team that gave him the fortitude, the expertise, and legal advice to make it possible. Thank you very much, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you. Before our final alders speak, are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Seeing no other hands, the last speaker will be Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I rise to support this historic resolution. And for me, being a child of the South Side of Chicago and thinking about our black leaders, black legacy, we think about Attorney Montgomery. It's not lost on me when we think about Johnny Cochran, who has national fame. There would be no Johnny Cochran without Attorney Montgomery. I think it also needs to be known that Mr. Montgomery is an alumni of University of Illinois and University of Illinois Law School. Ladies and gentlemen, the 1950s. In the 1950s, the gentleman in the box graduated from one of our prestigious universities. Then going on to representing the Black Panther Party, school segregation, being the first black corporate counsel, and supporting many electants like our first black president. I was able to pin my dear fraternity brother this morning, and, Mr. Mayor, I took off my city pin and put on my Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity pin. Brother Montgomery, when we think about achievement in every field and endeavor, you are the marker, and it is why I strive every day for excellence. And so, I'm grateful for your support. I'm also grateful for your support of my family. You might not remember this, but almost 30 years ago, I had a cousin who unfortunately got into the crosshairs of the criminal justice system. And you were able to save him, to be able to support his family, to be able to give back to the city of Chicago. I remember my family scrambling to put resources together to keep my cousin out of prison. And it was because of you being a Godsend to be able to do that. And Brother Montgomery, you're probably the reason that I had the exposure to also stay out of trouble and keep my nose clean, as you've mentioned to me on several occasions. And so, Brother Montgomery, thank you for what you've done here in the city of Chicago. Thank you for what you've done in our nation. Many of my colleagues also expressed their love for you. I love you as well, and I am greatly appreciative of you, good brother. All the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Robinson. Just to shout out and lift up some of the folks that are joining Mr. Montgomery today, LaLeen Goh, Helen Loretto Montgomery, Kyle Coward, Jillian Montgomery, Michelle Montgomery, and Mrs. Pauline Montgomery. I do want to just say a few words here, as the city council recognizes the life and legacy of Mr. James Montgomery. Truly left an incredible mark on our city, the legal profession in particular, through his work at law firms as the Assistant U.S. Attorney for the Northern District of Illinois and the founding partner of James D. Montgomery and Associates. Throughout his career, Mr. James Montgomery achieved landmark verdicts and settlements for his clients, justice for countless families and individuals. He has been recognized for the great work he has done in the legal profession, but so much more. He's left a mark on the city council, serving as corporate counsel for Mayor Harold Washington, providing legal counsel and leadership during very pivotal moments in our nation's history. He ensured that the next generation of legal professionals and public servants and community leaders would be ready to face all of the challenges through his teaching and mentorship. And so, today, we thank and recognize Mr. James Montgomery, Sr. for all of his years of service and commitment to justice, his contributions to our city and to all of our residents. Today, we officially dedicated the sixth floor foyer in his honor, that will always be in his honor, the James Montgomery Senior foyer. But you'll be remembered, Mr. Montgomery, for all of the inspiration that you have provided, and whether it's defending the Black Panther Party or even defending immigrants. I think it's just worthwhile noting that it was Mr. James Montgomery that brought forth the policy of sanctuary, which is living proof that you can fight for black liberation and protect immigrants. In fact, at the time, A.D. Moyar, who had a plan to round up undocumented immigrants, referred to as Operation Taxicab, where A.D. Moyar set up shop to essentially arrest every single individual that drove taxis at that time, which was overwhelmingly immigrants, of which many of them were actually documented U.S. citizens. But even in the midst of that operation, when it didn't quite go the way A.D. Moyar wished for it to go, he blamed Mayor Harold Washington. And so, it's very clear that the shoulders that we stand on, that there are forces that still wish to round people up and to undermine our integrity and the beauty of our diversity of our city. But thank God, we have an example, a living example, in Mr. James D. Montgomery, Sr. And... Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage of this resolution in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And with leave from this body, we will allow Mr. Montgomery, if he wishes, to say a couple of words. Please be seated.
You know, a lawyer should never be given an opportunity to say a few words, but I'll try and limit it to a few. When I was asked years ago to be the Corporation Counsel, I had to think about it. I was making money. I was making... And I told the mayor I would have to talk to my wife, and I talked to her, and she just beat me over the head and told me what a tremendous opportunity it would be to be in public service, and an opportunity to be working for the first black mayor. And so, I succumbed, and I must say that I am so grateful for having made that decision, because while public service has its negatives, sometimes underappreciated, it is a wonderful opportunity to try and do some good for the public in general. And so, I've enjoyed that very much. And I commend all of you, as you perform your public duties, as you engage in public service, as they whip saw and give you a hard time from time to time, and you handled all of that, because sometimes the public believes that they own you, and they sometimes mistreat you. But I'll say to you, keep up the good work, and thank you so much for this opportunity to feel as good as I've felt during this last few hours. Thank you.
All right, we'll just take a few moments before our next group enters into the box. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you. I stand in support of this resolution. As the Alderman of the 50th Ward, which has the largest Jewish community in the city of Chicago, and as the only Jewish member of the city council, I'd like to take a moment to honor Jewish-American Heritage Month and reflect on the profound legacy of Jewish Americans in our city and our country. The first Jewish settlers arrived on American soil in 1654, fleeing persecution in Portuguese-controlled Brazil. They landed in what was then New Amsterdam, which is now New York City, seeking refuge and freedom. That small group... That small group of 23 people laid the foundation for what would become one of the most vibrant Jewish communities. Today, the United States is home to nearly 40% of the world's Jewish population, second only to Israel. And right here in the city of Chicago alone, there are roughly 300,000 Jewish residents, which make us the fifth-largest Jewish community in the world. From the arts to science, from law to philanthropy, Jewish Americans have been at the heart of shaping this country's identity. We are doctors and lawyers, educators and nurses, business owners and public servants. We are your neighbors, friends, and family. Jewish Americans gave us the polio vaccine and helped split the atom. They marched with Dr. King and joined in the fight for civil rights. Jewish history in America is not a footnote; it is a central chapter in our nation's history. Despite generations of contributions, Jewish Americans face a disturbing and painful reality. Anti-Semitism is rising at an alarming rate. Here in Chicago and across the nation, we are witnessing unprecedented levels of anti-Jewish hate. Jewish students are being targeted on our college campuses and in our public schools. Jewish residents are being harassed and attacked on our streets. And hateful individuals are tearing down posters that call attention to kidnapped Jewish hostages. These are not isolated incidents. They reflect a growing threat to the safety and well-being of our community. Jewish Chicagoans, again, the fifth-largest Jewish community in the world, do not feel protected. We don't know if our elected officials will keep us safe from those who wish to harm us. So today, I call on my fellow city council members, community leaders, and every Chicagoan to join us on this critical fight against anti-Semitism, whether it comes from the far right, the far left, or anywhere in between. This is not a political issue; it is a moral imperative. Be on the right side of history, defend the Jewish people, the Jewish faith, and the Jewish state from hatred and discrimination. Together, let's work towards a future where all people, regardless of their religion, ethnicity, or background, can thrive and flourish with dignity and pride. We are joined here today by representatives of the Jewish United Fund of Chicago, the American Jewish Committee, the Simon Wiesenthal Center, and Stand With Us. The Jewish United Fund, or JUF, is one of the largest humanitarian organizations in the country. For more than 120 years, JUF has served people of all faiths in Chicago, Israel, and across the globe. Representing JUF here are Dan Goldwin and Jane Charney. Stand or waver. The American Jewish Committee, or AJC, is a global advocacy organization dedicated to enhancing the well-being of the Jewish people and Israel, and to advancing human rights and democratic values. AJC is represented here by Mark Basewit, Mark Weiner, Susie Evans, and Eileen Adler. The Simon Wiesenthal Center is a global Jewish human rights activist organization that confronts anti-Semitism and hate, defends the safety of Israel and Jews worldwide, and teaches the lessons of the Holocaust for future generations. Simon Wiesenthal is represented by Allison Piersloven, the Director of the Midwest Region. And Stand With Us is an international Israel education organization that inspires people of all ages and backgrounds, challenges misinformation, and fights anti-Semitism. Stand With Us is represented here by Yessi Held, the Executive Director of the Midwest Thank you all for being here today. Thank you to my colleagues, and may we celebrate a meaningful and joyful Jewish American Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forty-five years ago, President Jimmy Carter issued the first proclamation, or White House proclamation, designating a Jewish Heritage Week, and lauded the contributions of Jewish Americans, and all those contributions to U.S. culture and history. So like people of all our communities, the Jewish American experience has contributed to building up our institutions and building on our strengths as a country. I just want to say that I am committed to commemorating all that the Jewish community has done here in Chicago and throughout our country, especially as we see a rise in anti-Semitism throughout their country that we must continue to combat. Thank you each for your personal contributions to everything Jewish American in Chicago and throughout our country, and I wish you the best throughout the month. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I always love that Jewish American Heritage Month is the same month as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, because we share so many similarities in culture. You know, our love for wontons and dumplings and kreplak, which you have, as well as mahjong. But beyond that, a real deep appreciation and respect for culture and family, and what that means bringing that to a new country. As we said, this is Jewish American Heritage Month and Asian American Heritage Month, and our histories are American history, and we shouldn't forget that. So I thank you for all that you do every day, to teach tolerance, to fight injustice, to fight hate, which we share sadly. We have that in common as well. That is something that I wish we didn't have in common. I wish we didn't have to fight that every day, but we do, and we've been there for each other. So I thank you for the partnership on behalf of our community as well, and thank you again for all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the best way to put it is something that Sebastian Maniscalco said, Italians and the Jews are same company, just different division. And I believe that, to my colleague, Alderwoman Silverstein, I stand strongly with you. The individuals in the box, I also stand strongly with you. If we're not together, we're divided. If we're not together, we divide, we collapse. So I appreciate this, what you're doing, and I stand strongly with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the city council, and welcome to our guests here today. It's more than just words to say that we are standing here with the Jewish community, especially at a time when there's still, as we heard last night, a gaping wound from October 7th, 594 days ago, with nearly 60 individuals still being held hostage in Gaza, ripped from their homes, ripped from their country by terrorists hell-bent on trying to destroy the state of Israel. We are all wearing a yellow ribbon to remember that there are still individuals in tunnels, there are still remains being kept from their families. And even just as we saw a few weeks ago, even Americans were still being held 500-plus days later. We can honor 77 years of existence, but we cannot forget those who are still in the dark. Names like Tamir Adar, Mohammed Al Atarash, Matan Angrest, Aviv Adzili, Sahar Baruk, Uriel Baruk, Galiberman, Ziverman, Elkana Bobat, Ram Roslovsky, Itay Chen, Nimron Cohen, Emiram Cooper, Ariel Cuneo, pronouncing it in Spanish, David Cuneo, Evyatar David, Ronan Engel, Gaige Boa Dalal, Hadair Goldin, Manny Godard, Ron Gavilli, Gad Hagaji, Judy Weinstein-Hagaji, Tal Jaime, Inbar Heyman, Maxim Herken, Etan Horn, Guy Illuz, Segev Kafon, Vipin Joshi, Afra Kadar, Bar Ibrahim Cooperstein, Shay Levinson, Etan Levy, Eliehu Margalat, Amri Maran, Joshua Lotumolel, Etan Abraham Moore, Omer Noetra, Tamir Limradi, Yosef Chaim Ohana, Alan Ohel, Druor Or, Avinatan Or, Daniel Oz, Daniel Peretz, Yonatan Samorano, Leo Rudolph, Yossi Sharabi, Edan Shetivi, Elon Weiss, Yari Yakov, whose family I had the opportunity to meet, Matan Senkoker, Ari Samanovitz, and forgive me. Those names cannot be forgotten. Those individuals' lives are also what we're here to recognize and remember and to fight and to stand with the people who, despite 3,000 years of attempts to rid them from this world, God has never forgotten them, and neither will we. We stand here today in support. We stand here today recognizing those that survive, and we stand here today planting the seeds for the garden in the years to come. Thank you, Mr. President, and I support this resolution.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez.
I also rise and stand in support of this resolution. Today, we celebrate Jewish American History Month, honoring the remarkable contributions of Jewish Americans to our nation. At the core of their legacy is a sacred agreement, a transformative promise between a people and the divine, that reshaped human history and inspired the foundational principles of American liberty. Before this promise, societies were ruled by absolute power. There was no such thing as individual rights before the concept that we are created in God's image. This agreement introduced a new promise, a society rooted in justice, compassion, and the equal dignity of every person. It's called for fairness and accountability, ideas that stood in stark contrast to the hierarchies of the same, setting a new standard for humanity. Centuries later, these ideals echo in America's founding documents, which enshrined freedoms of speech, belief, and justice for all. Jewish Americans have embodied this spirit, from early patriots who helped secure our independence, to modern champions of equality, enriching our nation's culture, science, and moral fabric despite facing adversity. Let us honor their legacy by upholding the principles of liberty and justice they helped shape and introduce. May we build a city that reflects the promise of fairness and compassion for all, and may we all recognize that without Jewish history, there is no American history. Thank you all for being here today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this month for our brothers and sisters. I don't think anyone knows the 16th Ward better than you, Dan, Rabbi Barry, and Chuck Swarsky, and I just want to say thank you. Of course, and Chairman Silverstein, who we have in committee almost every other month. But I would just like to say thank you. Thank you for coming to the 16th Ward, coming to Inglewood, and learning about my community and the love that we both share, and your wife, with our senior population, and how we can make our seniors' lives, quality of life, better, and of course, our children. So I want to personally, publicly and personally, say thank you. On March 3rd, 2020, one of our talking points and relatable moments as a freshman Alderman, I went to Israel, and I was baptized in the Jordan River, and oh, did my life change. Unbeknownst to me, 20 days later, would be a global pandemic called COVID-19. But on that trip, I visited different beautiful sites, and I remember there were some specific stones, and the favorite one was "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God." So I want to remind my colleagues, blessed are we peacemakers, peacemakers, because no matter what color, religion, faith, whatever we are, we are all children of God. So I want to say thank you, Mr. President, and shalom.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy to be associated with this resolution. I may have the second-largest Jewish ward, maybe close, we'll have to run numbers, but very, very proud to represent the Jewish institutions and businesses in the Lakeview East community. As Alderwoman Silverstein said, we have to do better. We have to do better to stamp out anti-Semitism and to protect all Chicago residents that are still feeling a lot of pain. There's a lot of uncertainty as to how we keep everyone safe. And so, as we learned when we visit the Illinois Holocaust Museum, we want to be upstanders, not bystanders, and I would say, let's recommit ourselves to being upstanders. I talked to the eighth-grade civics classes about it, we could talk to each other about it, and really recommit to that today. So again, I want to just thank Alderwoman Silverstein, everyone in the box, your organizations are doing amazing work all across the city, and thank you for all of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this resolution, recognizing Jewish American Heritage and History Month. I want to thank Alderwoman Silverstein. I know it's been a challenging time for you. I think we all recognize that. It takes a lot of courage to be able to speak your truth. When you think about a people that has been oppressed, that has been marginalized, and then you see the rise of anti-Semitism continue on, it's a scary time. And I think, in thinking about the history of Jewish Americans, there's a lot that we should learn and really never forget. When the Jewish folks came here seeking refuge and seeking a home, the United States first turned them away and treated them like they treat a lot of refugees coming into this So I think it's a recognition of how sometimes government, run by insecure men in powerful seats, may have lapses in judgment that lead to not the most just outcomes. But thankfully, we are all afforded the opportunity to redeem ourselves, and so the United States did at one point, then start receiving refugees as they sought places to live. Similarly, knowing the Jewish history allows us to see that although history doesn't exactly repeat itself, sometimes you see echoes of the same kind of concerns when you see governments become more authoritarian, incite into fascism, and marginalize people, and take away due process. These are things that, even as we're seeing them now in our current nation, it's not the first time it's happened. There's a lot that we need to learn from our Jewish siblings who have undergone similar treatment and seeing what that can lead to. It is why many of us here, in speaking out against the current leadership at the federal government, think about what that leads to. And so I thank all of you all for inviting us to the Holocaust Museum, for having the conversations with us, so we don't truly forget, and we actually learn for those of us who don't know the history. And so when we think about across the globe where people are often marginalized, when you see children that are starving across the world, it may not be exact, but there's similar echoes, and we, as the United States, should have an understanding that sometimes a people is separate from their government. And so to have any kind of broad strokes about what a people means and what kind of monolith is imprecise. We need to think about the humanity of all of our siblings, and our Jewish folks can teach us more than most. So thank you. So thank you all for those lessons. We hope to continue in growing in partnership, knowing that we don't want to see anyone in the whole world be marginalized, be treated as lesser than, be made to suffer. We are all ultimately siblings on one ball floating in space. And unless we recognize that and find ways to work together, we're going to keep repeating the same failures. And so thank you for the work that you do, for those reminders. And I look forward to continuing to work with you in Coalition. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to be associated with this resolution and echo the cause of, for the celebration of American Jewish History Month. And the Jewish community should know that although we have one Jewish City Council member, she's not alone. And it's important that we stand with our allies, whether it's Israel or Ukraine. As a combat veteran, it's important to understand and recognize our friends. Jewish community lives in a tough neighborhood. When you're taking a look at some of the powers that be, China, Russia, Iran, North Korea, and other general extremists that are out there wanting to see Israel gone as a nation, we have to remember that we are allies, and we support that. And so it's important that, just having visited Israel this month and seeing the challenges and the resilience of people, the people of Israel and their community, I want you to know that here locally, we stand with you. And again, congratulations on this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for bringing this forward. I too stand with you. And I like to refer to myself as, proudest things here, as I like that, but I always refer to you as your, as me as your closest ally. So, but there's many of us, it's not just me. So just thanks for bringing this forward. And many of the faces there, I know you all know me, I'm here for you. Not understanding what's going on in this world certainly is a tough thing. I certainly wish somebody who's a chancellor and university president would get their heads out of their butts what's going on over there. But disgusting, but we stand with you, I stand with you. And God bless you and hopefully better things ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to belabor the points that were so eloquently raised by my colleagues this afternoon. But there's someone that is not in the box that I want to recognize, and that is Ann Oppenheimer. I would ask that all of us please keep her husband, John Oppenheimer, in your thoughts and in your prayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also like to rise in support of this resolution. Shalom. It gives me a great honor to be before you today to celebrate Jewish American Heritage Month, a time to recognize the remarkable contributions that Jewish Americans have made to the fabric of our nation and to the great city of Chicago, from the arts and science and to education, civil rights, business, medicine, and public service. Jewish Americans have shaped this country with resilience, brilliance, and a deep commitment to justice. Their impact is not only historical, it's personal, it's local, and it's enduring. Here in Chicago, we are blessed to have a vibrant Jewish community whose leadership, philanthropy, and advocacy have helped build institutions, protect democracy, and lift up those in need. Whether through organizations like the Jewish United Fund, the Anti-Defamation League, or countless synagogues and community centers, Jewish Americans have been on the front lines of progress, often standing in solidarity with other marginalized communities, including the African-American community, in the pursuit of equal rights and dignity for all people. Jewish American Heritage Month also reminds us of the importance of remembrance. Remember the horrors of antisemitism, from pogroms and the Holocaust to hate crimes and threats to sadly still see today, we sadly still see today. But in that remembrance, we also find resolve to speak out, to stand up, and to build a society where hate has no safe harbor. At a time when division and intolerance try to root, try to take root, we must rise together in unity. We must teach our children the power of diversity, the value of shared history, and the strength we gain when we look out for one another. Let us honor the Jewish American story not only by reflecting on the past, but by making new commitments in the present, to build bridges, to uplift communities, and to keep working toward a more just, inclusive, and compassionate Chicago. On behalf of the 27th Ward and the Burnett family, I just want to say todah and zaygazan.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Very well, seeing no hands, we would like to recognize again those who are here with us today in the box, Dan Goldwyn, Jane Charney, Steve Greenbaum, Allison Parey-Slovan, Yossi Held, and Ann Oppenheimer, Mark Bizzowetz, Susie Evans, Eileen Adler, and Alan Reich. So as this council speaks in the affirmative in support of Jewish American Heritage Month, I am very proud that we celebrate this collectively as a city. I honor the contributions that Jewish Americans have made in our city. And since the 1830s, Jewish Americans have shaped Chicago's culture, communities, and economy by building businesses, advancing social justice, and making lasting contributions to arts, sciences, education, public service, and so much more. Jewish Americans are part of the great soul of Chicago. They have enriched our communities with their culture and have helped build a more vibrant, inclusive, compassionate, and loving city. We can celebrate Jewish American Heritage Month with commemorations and, more importantly, with action. As a city, let us continue to stand up against hate in all form. Chicago's inclusive spirit is what sets us apart from many other cities and many other places on the globe. We must protect this spirit at all costs and lift up the diverse communities that make our city strong. At a time in which antisemitism permeates across the country, here in Chicago, let us continue to reaffirm our city as a place where all people can live free and thrive. To our Jewish American community, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your enduring commitment to this city. Thank you for your tenacity. Thank you for the embracing of what binds us together, our respective humanity. I'm honored to celebrate you this month and to work with you to continue to build a better, stronger, safer society for all. Thank you all very much. Here's to Jewish American Heritage Month. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage of this resolution in the name of...
Hearing, no objections. So ordered. And now for our final resolution. For AANHPI Heritage Month Resolution, the Chair would like to recognize our first speaker, Alder Lenny Manah-Hoppenworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, colleagues. Good afternoon to those in the box. Thank you for taking time today to celebrate with us, to celebrate you. And I rise to stand in full support of this resolution for Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month to celebrate you this year. You know, we also have had our share of anti-Asian hate in the last several years. And representation does matter. So I am one of the first, the first Filipino to be elected to City Council and the first person of color to represent Edgewater and Uptown, including Asia on Argyle. And so we celebrate our culture through food, through gathering. And I know that some of you came with us this year to join us over lunch. And we appreciate that so much because we want to recognize you as much as we can for the work that you do. And this year, we wanted to really localize what we're doing by focusing on the departments that help us do the work that we need to do every day to bring better quality of life for all of our constituents. So thank you, thank you for being here in the box. So Chicago has seen a doubling of the AANHPI communities since 2000. And Chicago and the nation has seen that doubling. And yet, here in City Council and in our departments, we're still working to get that representation. But we want to celebrate what you have done with us already. And I wanted to shout out to just a few of you who have been able to join us today. Firstly, I wanted to say thank you to our partner in labor, Don Bular. Stand up and take a wave. Our friend, Don Bular, from the CFL. And Don, you know, you were born into the fight for social justice and activism through your family in the Philippines. And you brought that work here to Chicago for workers' rights and for labor rights. And we thank you for being a partner to us here. So thank you, Don, for being here today so we could celebrate you. We have others that we wanted to bring over today. I wanted to have those who are staffers of Aldermanic offices rise up. If you're here, we have Pooja and Sally from the 47th and the 11th Ward. Thank you for making us look so good. We appreciate everything that you do. Thank you, thank you. I wanted to have those from the Department of Planning Development rise up as well. Thank you for helping us with land use. This is the Deputy Commissioner of DPD, Cindy Chan-Robic, and also the Director of Finance, Mayor Boa. So thank you for helping us to create the infrastructure to make it more equitable for people to live and work and stay here in Chicago. Thank you so much. We have others from CDOT here. Thank you for being here, Molly Samadi, and also Jay Kuleo. You help us make safe infrastructure happen for our people here in Chicago, including our young people, our older adults, those with disabilities. You connect communities. You help us get to public transit so that we can get to and from where we need to go. Thank you for connecting us together and connecting our communities. Thank you, CDOT. I also want to shout out to our Chief of Policy from the Mayor's Office, Jung Yun. So it wasn't too long ago that Jung was dreaming about how we can have a more equitable Chicago through land use and policies to create more affordable housing. And I want to congratulate you on your first big win for green social housing here in Chicago, which is going to help so many for generations to come and allow us to use the funds that we have locally to do that and to have less reliance on our federal subsidies. So thank you for your work on that. Thank you so much. And there are others that are in the box. And so I wanted to thank you and congratulate you for your work. There are many departments that are here in the city of Chicago that do so much to help us do the job that we need to do to make our cities stronger and safer, a place where we can open small businesses to thrive. And we do that through our Asian American community. And so I thank you for that. And thank you for the work that you help us do every single day. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also like to rise in support of this resolution. Namaste, ni hao, ne ho ma. They hate, they're going, they're hating on me now. But anyway. First of all, I just wanted to thank, and I'm sorry for the other ones that I may have missed. It is with deep honor to join you today in celebrating Asian American Pacific Island Heritage Month, a time to uplift the history, advancement, culture, and richness of AAPL communities across this country and right here in the city of Chicago. Asian American and Pacific Island heritage is an American heritage. It's American heritage from the railroad and farms that helped build this nation to leadership in medicine, technology, to arts, education, public service. The contributions of AAPL individuals have been essential to the American story. And they continue to shape our collective future. In Chicago, we are proud to be home to vibrant AAPL communities, from Chinatown to Albany Park to Uptown, neighborhoods that reflect the strength of diversity and the beauty of cultural pride. Whether it's a small family business, a cultural festival, or a classroom where young leaders are being formed, the AAPL presence in our city is strong, resilient, and full of purpose. But let us also be clear. Celebrating AAPL heritage also means acknowledging the challenges. It means standing against the rise in anti-Asian hate, discrimination, and ignorance that too many have had to endure, not just in recent years, but throughout history. From the Chinese Exclusion Act to the Japanese internment camps, to today's harmful rhetoric and violence, the struggles for justice is not new. And yet, through every hardship, AAPL communities have continued to rise with dignity, with courage, with a deep commitment to family, community, and country. So as we honor AAPL Heritage Month, let us not only reflect, let us recommit. Let us recommit to equity and inclusion in our policy, our schools, our workplaces, our neighborhoods. Let us support AAPL voices and leadership, empower young people, and stand in solidarity whenever and wherever injustice appears. Let us teach our children that every culture, every heritage, every story deserve to be told, to be heard, and to be celebrated. On behalf of the 27th Ward and myself, city of Chicago, I want to say kam sami da, sheh sheh, danday ba, shakram. I want to say all of those things. Thank you all. Thank you all very much for everything that you have done for the city of Chicago, your commitment, and your resiliency. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. And I do like to rise in support of this important resolution honoring Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. As someone who represented, I had the honor and privilege to represent the Chinatown community in our city, it is, it gives me great pride to see in our Asian American community not only the fastest community growing in the city of Chicago, but a Chinatown community that continues to grow that continues to grow and is the pride of not only the city, but nationally, one of those Chinatowns that not only have survived in despite of the challenges, continue to thrive and show an example of what communities, immigrant communities, can do and the incredible value that they bring to our city. The diversity, the traditions, the vibrancy of the Chinatown community and the multiple communities across the city are truly pearls for our community to continue to protect and support so they continue to thrive. I wanted to recognize, of course, the fact that now we have two council members here in the city of Chicago. It is something to recognize that progress can be made when we indeed work in the best interest of the people of the city of Chicago. There's a number of elected officials that continue to represent the Asian American and Pacific Islander community. And to me, it is a great pleasure and honor to continue to be an ally in this struggle. When we see hate rising, it is through solidarity. And I want to commend especially two good friends in the box, my good friend, Don Villar, who is a true partner and leader in labor, a true champion of justice, that continues to ignite excitement and also resistance in our city. So I want to thank him for all his efforts in labor and to be here with us. And also, to young, for her partnership in our last effort to pass the Green Social Housing Ordinance as a Chief of Policy, that gives me great pleasure to see so many wonderful leaders in our community making a huge difference, continuing to the diversity, the vibrancy, and that legacy for generations to come. I rise in support on behalf of all the 25th Ward, and I thank you always for your support to the city of Chicago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also stand to support this resolution. And I was hoping to see in the box our former colleague, the first Asian American Pacific Islander in Alderman, Amaya Puar. I was hoping that he would be in the box as he's really set the tone for representing the AAPI community. And I also was hoping to see Grace Chan-McGibbon in the box, someone who fought tirelessly during the recent redistricting to ensure that Chinatown had a majority ward and that we would elect, or strike that, we would position ourselves to elect the first Asian-Chinese Alderman in the City Council. She ended up being appointed first and then getting elected. But nonetheless, Grace in the Chinese community worked tirelessly to make sure that during that redistricting, the Chinatown was in one ward so we could make sure that there's fair representation. And so I just wanted to stand up and acknowledge and say congratulations on the recognition of Asian American Pacific Islander Month. And again, thank you for everything that you're doing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise proudly to be associated with this resolution, recognizing Asian American Pacific Islander Month. I really want to thank the leadership of our two colleagues that are members of the community, Lenny Manah-Hoppenworth and Nicole Lee. Thank you all so much for your leadership, for the beginning of a caucus. And some of us are working our way through population in our wards to be a part of the family. We know we've got work to do, and we appreciate that we have some representation at the city. Currently, we're at 4.9% of city staff being Asian. We also recognize the population in city 7.2. So although we've made some progress, we've got work to do, and we ask that you all hold us accountable and challenge us to do so. The 40th Ward is proudly 20% Asian American Pacific Islander. And we are the home, or soon to be home, of some great organizations such as the Indo-American Center, Trellis, Chinese Mutual Aid, the Japanese American Service Committee, and many others that really do amazing work on the ground and show a wealth of knowledge, of heritage, culture, and of heart, serving anyone who needs the help, understanding what the challenges are for all of us when we first get here in the U.S. and what it means to get those support systems. And I'm humbled by being a partner, just by the virtue of being here in the 40th. We're also represented in part in the 40th by such amazing leaders as Commissioner Josina Marita, State Senator Ramvili Balam, State Representative Kevin Olakul, State Representative Han Nguyen. It's great to have those kind of colleagues around us to make sure we're doing everything to continue representing our community. And we look forward to continuing to partner, to build upon wins such as the Teach Act and making sure that we have at the city level the representation in hiring, the representation in city department agency leadership, and really to work to make sure we have the kind of improved language access that we've been fighting for years to try to get out here and that has not been done. I want to thank folks who I've worked with personally. Jung, thank you for all your work. You know how challenging it is to pass legislation here, and we're appreciative of the leadership. Don, to have a partner like you in labor, to kind of be with you and watching Starbucks workers first unionize and having that kind of leadership at every level is valued. And then I would be remiss if I didn't shout out Pooja Ravindran, who's right there at the back. Pooja is, yeah, a lot of the crew here knows Pooja because of the work that we do at the city level. Pooja was our first, well, our third Chief of Staff at the office, been there for a number of years, and has moved over to be the Policy Chief at the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Pooja does an amazing job, not only in execution, but sometimes pushing me to be able to do more, to do better. And so I'm appreciative of having a twin like you, and you know you like when I call us twinsies out here, for your leadership and for making sure that I'm a better leader for it. So thank you. Thank you all, Zoe as well, didn't want to forget for the work that you've done in helping all us out. Again, make sure you push us. We may be friendly in partnership, but there's always more that we can do. Make sure that you're adding that healthy tension so we continue to move us forward. Thank you so much for everything you do, as well as our communities and our siblings. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I choose stand in support of this resolution. I want to wish you a happy Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. As I'm going to piggyback a little on my colleague Alderman Lee, what she said for Jewish American Heritage Month, I think it's no coincidence that they both fall out in the same month. We are always standing together and will continue to do so. Alderwoman Lee and I, just FYI, are planning a mahjong tournament with my community and your community, so stay tuned on the details with that and be prepared because I'm practicing. And just happy to be here to support, so congratulations.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you both to our colleagues and to this amazing community. It's so good to see you. We have not seen each other in person, only via Zoom, but the great leadership here. And I also want to just commend the first Asian American woman to chair the Women's Caucus here in the city of Chicago, Alderwoman Lee, and the advocacy that you have with housing and just to uplift this community and say thank you. My nieces love the culture, and I thought that my culture adored Michael Jackson until I went to Chinatown and the karaoke, you all give us a run for our money, but just want to say thank you, and I uplift and celebrate you.
Thank you. If there are no other Alders, Alderwoman Nicole Lee has asked to close. Again, are there any other Alders that wish to speak? With that, our final speaker, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. An apologies to my colleagues, this is not going to be short. But it's the one time where I can exercise a little bit of privilege. Good afternoon, everyone. It is an incredible honor to stand in support of this resolution, celebrating AAPI Heritage Month, not only as a representative of this great city, but as the first Chinese American to ever serve on the City Council of Chicago. I stand here on the shoulders of so many who came before me, who endured, who persevered, and who insisted on their place in this country, even when others didn't always welcome them. This AAPI Heritage Month, we gather to honor those who have committed themselves to public service, not just elected officials, but all of our AAPI civil servants who quietly, diligently, and powerfully helped to run this country. Now, you see a smattering of them here. They didn't show up for the picture, Mr. Mayor, because they were hard at work at their desks. We had to give them a little bit of a curtain call so that they wouldn't be away from their work for too long. That just shows their commitment. But from neighborhood caseworkers to public defenders, from city engineers and laborers to teachers and administrators, AAPIs have been integral to the machinery of government for generations. And yet, their service has often gone unrecognized. Today, we shine a light on them, and we do so with the full understanding that our journey has not been easy. We remember the Japanese American soldiers of the 442nd Regimental Combat Team who fought for democracy abroad while their families were imprisoned in internment camps at home. Among them, the late Senator Daniel Inouye, excuse me, Daniel Inouye, who returned from war with one arm and rose to become a moral compass in the halls of Congress. And he showed us that public service is not just about policy, but it's about sacrifice and courage. We remember Yuri Kociama, who transformed her own internment into a lifelong fight for justice, for Black liberation, for peace, for human rights. Her activism taught us that solidarity among minorities and between communities is not optional, it is essential. We remember Grace Lee Boggs, the great radical philosopher and daughter of Chinese immigrants who built movements in Detroit and challenged all of us to reimagine what justice, dignity, and transformation really mean. And here in Chicago, we honor the thousands of AAPI civil servants, some whose names in history may never record, who built neighborhoods, maintained public trust, and worked each day to make this city better for all of us. And I would like to mention just a couple. People like Paul Igasaki, who worked under Premier Harold Washington, and he moved on to the federal government and the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, where his work moved the commission to protect the rights of all Americans, helping to establish standards for sexual and racial harassment in the United States. To more locally here, Jane Lau at the Chicago Board of Elections, for decades ensuring access to citizens to the ballot box. And my own father and role model, Jean Lee, who served the city for more than 30 years in various roles. And this year also marks two significant milestones in AAPI history that I would be remiss not to acknowledge. And Alderman Viegas started this earlier with our Vietnam veterans. It's been 50 years since the fall of Saigon, and that was a moment that reshaped this country's immigrant history. In the decades since, Vietnamese, Cambodian, Laotian, and Hmong families, many fleeing war, rebuilt their lives here in America, including here in Chicago. They became workers, students, public servants, and today, their children and grandchildren are leading the way. Just look at Han Nguyen up on the north side. And this year, we mark what would have been Vincent Chin's 70th birthday. And if you don't know the name Vincent Chin, Google it. Vincent Chin's murder in 1982 was a turning point, a young Chinese-American man beaten to death in Detroit by autoworkers who blamed Japan for their job losses. That was the night before he was getting married. His death ignited a civil rights movement, and his mother, Lily Chin, turned her grief into advocacy. The AAPI community learned to speak with one voice and to demand justice. Their stories and our own remind us that representation is not symbolic, it's essential. So to all of the AAPI government workers, whether you work behind a desk or in front of a camera, whether you're new to the job or retiring after 30 years, thank you. You've built trust where there was fear, and you created possibility where there was none. You are the legacy we honor this month and every month. But we know honoring this legacy is not enough, and we must build on it. So I stand here before you today, not just with pride, but with purpose, to promise to lead with integrity, with courage, and an unwavering commitment to the generations yet to come. And to the young people watching, whether you're the child of immigrants or an immigrant yourself, this city is yours, and your voice belongs in every room. We will not stay quiet, we will lift our voices, not to speak over others, but to speak with clarity, with strength, and solidarity. Because representation is not the end of the road, it's the beginning of our new chapter. And let's us write that together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman. Thank you. Well said. So again, some of the names, we just want to just lift up Christopher Yang and Cindy Chan-Rubik, Chris Brown, Jung Yoon, Jai Khalil, Anne Zhang-Vig, Christian Morthe, Steve Chung, Malehi Samadi, Mahur Bawa. We've heard the name Don Villar enough today, no, Don Villar. Again, to all of the individuals that are in the box, you know, for the Asian American, but the AAPI community, it's such a strong and proud and vibrant community, such rich culture, traditions, and a history that can be found really in every corner of our city. You all have made such an indelible contribution to, and you've achieved such greatness across many fields, including science, literature, activism, and arts. You are making great strides in every level of government, both here in Chicago and across the country. As my administration continues to grow, with well over 6% of the AAPI community being reflected in the administration, it is a true remarkable testament to the Alders that are part of this body, Alders Nicole Lee and Manah-Hoppenworth, and really to all of the Asian American and Pacific Islanders who represent our city at various levels of government. This month, we are coming together to celebrate and uplift and support and advocate for all of the respective communities that represent our AAPI community. Our city is what it is today because of our diversity and the rich mixture of talent and values and cultures and traditions and heritage. They all together make Chicago truly a global city. We can never lose sight of that. And so this month, and really every month, we need to continue to learn from one another, celebrate the Asian American Pacific Islander communities, and to embrace the shared humanity of what I constantly refer to as the soul of Chicago. And so with that, we thank you, we see you, we value you, and we celebrate you. So here's to AAPI Heritage Month. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passes of this resolution in the honor of this.
Hearing no objections. So ordered. Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections. So ordered. Alderwoman Sam Nugent wishes to participate in today's meeting remotely as stated in Rules 59. Madam Clerk, can you confirm her presence online?
Alderwoman Nugent.
Alderman Nugent is president. Thank you, Mr. President.
Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation of Alderwoman Sam Nugent? It's been moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and opposed saying nay. The motion passes. Now for communications.
Communications from this Honorable the Mayor to the Honorable the City Council of City Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Chief Financial Officer and the Commissioner of Aviation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Chicago O'Hare International Airport Senior Lean Revenue Bond and to Chicago Midway International Airport Senior Lean Revenue Bond. Your favorable consideration is that ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the forgiveness of existing debt and the release of the regulatory agreement for layland apartments. Your favorable consideration is that ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the Leclerc Accords Apartments Project. Your favorable consideration is that ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the execution of 65th Amendment to the Services Agreement for Somer Court 504, Inc. Your favorable consideration is that ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale and transfer of San Miguel Apartments located at 907 West Argyle Street. Your favorable consideration is that ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expansion and funding of the Corridor Manager Marketing Program and the Bronsville Priority Quarter of adding 47th Street from Cottage Grove to Prairie Avenue. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Twisted Eggroll LLC for the provision of neighborhood opportunity funds. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Budget Amendment. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing an amendment of 2025 Budget and Execution of a Service Provider Agreement with Uptown United for Special Service Area Number 34. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing favorable tax incentive classifications to specified properties located within the city. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for use of property located at 1713 South Ashland Avenue. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a land sale of the execution of redevelopment agreement with Claretton Associates Incorporated with the City Lots for Working Families Program. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request for the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned properties located at 505 to 508 North Monticello Avenue to Citizens Building a Better Community LLC. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of a city-owned vacant panel located at 7149 South Dobson Avenue to Habitat for Humanity Chicago. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Fleet and Facility Management, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a renewal lease agreement with Skyway Concession Company LLC for the use of the property located in 3154 East 95th Street. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Kenneth Burnett as member of the Chicago Low Income Housing Trust Fund Board for a term effective immediately and expiring December 31st, 2026 to succeed Andrew Greer, whose term has expired. Your favorable consideration is that the ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration is that these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Shoreline Advisory Board. Your favorable consideration is that these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Advisory Council on Special Events and Cultural Affairs. Your favorable consideration is that these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events and Cultural Affairs and Recreation. I, City Clerk Valencia, inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by City Council at the regular meeting held on May 7th, 2025, which were required by statute to be published in a pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on May 21st, 2025 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of the Proceedings of City Council of City Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications or reports requiring City Council action. Zoning Reclassification of Particular Areas, which referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Claims Against the City of Chicago, which referred to the Committee on Finance. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of Morning Baptist Church in 3993 South Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive as a Chicago Landmark, which referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. And Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks by Designation of Harris Trust and Savings Bank at 111 West Monroe Street as a Chicago Landmark, which referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. We're honored that concludes the reports and communications from the mayor and other city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For our committees, finance, the chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on May 19th, 2025, the following items received a due pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance authorizing a one-time fee waiver for the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for the construction project located at 111 East Erie Street in the 42nd Ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Hearing no, or I'm sorry, seeing no hands, members of the City Council, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
Please refresh your screens. The vote is now open. Refresh your screens or raise your hand if you need support. Look at everyone using their e-devices. I love it. All right, Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Lasbada, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Alderwoman Scott.
Yes.
Alderman Conway.
Yes.
Alderwoman Mitz. Not in chambers. Alderwoman Nugent.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, there's Alderwoman Mitz is a yes. Right on time. All right, Mitz and Nugent are a yes. Anyone else vote? Okay. The voting is now closed.
Very well, there are 49 yays, zero nays. This matter has passed. Alderman Mitchell, on the motion to reconsider.
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is a communication transmitting reports of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of April, 2025. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number 3A is an order authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute settlement order in the case of Chicago Parking Meters LLC versus City of Chicago Department of Finance, AAA, in the amount of $15.5 million. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 3B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Brianna Keys versus City of Chicago in the amount of $5 million. I move passage of this item by the same vote as applied to item 3A, with the exception of Alderman Conway, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Shea, Cardona, Spazado, Riley, Silverstein, and Nugent, who all wish to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, good afternoon, colleagues. I rise in opposition to this lawsuit. It's unfortunate what happened. But as we heard during committee, this is a situation where services were offered, services were refused, services were refused again, and now we are on the hook for $5 million. We have to stop setting precedent for just settling every single time in this room. We continue to set new precedents and issue new settlements. And it's not just related to police misconduct. It's related to anything that we can be sued for. We have to learn to say no. We have to learn that some situations, while tragic, are not necessarily our fault. They are not the responsibility of taxpayers. I remember the details of this, but I also know that we have seen time and time again, especially over the last several months, where acts of God are things that we're now settling. We are not God's piggy bank. We cannot keep doing this because we know that there are hundreds of other settlements that are coming down the pike. And by continuing down this path of creating a whole new cottage industry for unscrupulous lawyers to take advantage of, we are putting taxpayers at risk again for a generation. Because once you start saying, okay, we're going to pay for this, going to pay for that, there's no stopping that gravy train moving forward. And let me just remind you, ladies and gentlemen, some of the acts of God that we've paid for. We've had tree limbs break several months later, and somehow we've managed to settle for that. We've had cracked sidewalks that we didn't repair in the blink of an eye that have cost us $250,000. We have a whole network of bike lanes throughout the city of Chicago that, if not properly maintained, we've already begun paying out because cyclists hit a piece of debris and fell. And as I think even further, we've even paid out for when people have been drunk and missed the sign and drove off a ramp. Because somehow that was our fault, too. I know it's not easy. It's hard when we understand and our sympathies are played on and pulled on. But we have to say no. We have to start defending ourselves and not just looking for the easy way out. Because in the long run, while we hear about fiduciary responsibilities, this is costing us more. This will continue to grow, and it will continue to be an issue that we are going to deal with. As the police settlements decline, new settlements will take its place. And with that, I would ask for a roll call vote on this settlement.
Very well, Alderman Apolitano, were you trying to speak? No. So there's anyone else? Okay, the chair recognizes, there are a few folks that want to speak. The chair recognizes Alders Rodriguez Sanchez, and then Alder, Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to speak to the fact that this is not a frivolous lawsuit. This person lost her legs because the police failed to protect her. The idea that services were offered and were rejected, I think that that is a very flawed analysis when you're talking about somebody that is suffering a mental health crisis. The reason why we're being sued and the reason why it is important that we take this lawsuit seriously and compensate this person is because we don't have the tools right now to be able to care for people. So we have delegated that to police. And because we have delegated that to police, and police is not being able to serve that function, we are being sued. So I do believe that we have a responsibility, that we have to protect people. So we definitely should expand and strengthen the systems of care so that we can delegate this to people who actually can do that work. Because if we had a mental health crisis response unit at that point that that officer could have called, we wouldn't be here today. And that is way cheaper than paying for this settlement. Our care teams cost us $4 million a year. We're paying $5 million in this lawsuit because we didn't have the tools to help this person. In my community, this has happened. We have had people in negative temperatures outside, and I can guarantee you that my community is not going to let somebody get frostbite. So we should be able to expect from police officers to do everything that they can to protect somebody that is out in the cold. So I really want to encourage everybody to vote yes on this settlement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with, actually, both parties on this case here. I want to say this, and we've asked our Corporation Council to do more in the frame of risk management, mitigation, and bringing us cases that we know potentially are losers to us earlier so that we can save the taxpayers' dollars. I agree, there are cases that we should fight. But when we do fight, we need to go to court with a better set of facts than this. Meaning that if we see a woman in sub-freezing weather in a robe with no shoes on and we don't do something beyond say she refused services, it's not the set of facts that we want to go into court with. I mean, just think about that. Do you really want to send her into court with those sets of facts? This is what we've asked her to do to bring the cost of litigation down, and then we go through these conversations, spend $2 million on legal fees, and get a crazy verdict. Again, we've asked her to do a job, and she's doing the job that we've asked her to do. Now, if we want to reject that, fine, put some money on the table. Put some money on the table. Nobody wants to put the money on the table. Put your money on the table when it comes down to say no to these settlements. Because we got one today that cost us another almost million dollars that we said no to. Put your money on the table to make these decisions. And again, sending her into court with a bad set of facts is not right. It's, again, it goes against what our responsibility is. Yes, I agree with Alders, that we do need to have better training for our officers. Make sure we keep the care teams in place. The $4 million to cover the whole program, we just blew, plus another 25% in this one settlement. So again, let's be rational and honest about these situations. Again, I want to send it to court to fight some of these cases. But again, with a better set of facts than what we have been presented with today. I hope that we can kind of see beyond the rhetoric. I understand we want to play politics. But again, these are real dollars. Because the dollars that we think we're going to spend today, we continue to wait, there are going to be more. This isn't the only case that looks like this. You've got the other one coming up right behind this one, plus some other ones in the queue. So again, we got to be a little more judicious in our thinking and not continue to play politics around these settlements, trying to please a certain narrative. Because at the end of the day, the taxpayers are losing. Right now, we're going to cough up another, was it 685, ma'am, that we're going to cough up because we didn't make the right decision last year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't plan on speaking on this. I just planned on being a simple no, and thanks for acknowledging me and Madam Chair, because I forgot to tell you I was a no. But I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is, okay? This has to stop, people. It has to stop. It's a two-way street. It can't be a one-way street. Only we could use, lose, but you could win. That ain't right, okay? This is a sad situation. Where was her family? Her family didn't take her in. She didn't live with her own family, okay? She refused. She didn't want to go with the police. I don't know what more we could have done. It was a weird thing. I mean, you see somebody out on the street in her robe and no shoes, okay? You refuse a ride? She says she's afraid to go with the police because she don't want to get killed by the police? We're damned if we do, damned if we didn't. I could guarantee anybody here, anybody, we'd be here with an opposite thing. If they forced her in their car, we'd be being sued because they forced her in the car. So I'm not going to blame anybody. I'm not going to blame the call taker. I'm not going to blame the police. I'm not going to blame anybody. It's an unfortunate thing. I just don't think we should be paying $5 million for this. I'm a strong no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's really interesting how people have no understanding about mental health issues. And yet...
and yet we're the ones having to vote on things. Somehow, there's some expectation that someone going through a mental health issue can self-diagnose and say, hey, by the way, I have a mental health issue, or that because they're that they're doing so of sound mind and body. Any single person in here, we may agree, we may not agree, we may fight about a million things, I'm pretty confident that any person in here, driving in any street in the city of Chicago at five-degree weather, if they see a woman in a bathrobe without any shoes out in the cold, will do everything possible to make sure they're taken care of. And if that person said, you know what, I'm afraid of getting into your car, you know what a grown-up would do? Hey, guess what? We're just going to wait here. We'll see if an ambulance could come by, or maybe a fire department, or someone who you might feel safer with, to make sure you're okay. That's just decency. And so I think, I know it gets very tense in here, and I'll be honest, I don't blame the officers. I think they may not have even known how to deal with the issue. There were new officers trying to identify how to solve a problem. To Alder Spazaro's point, which I agree, they may have felt a concern that if we actually put somebody in the vehicle, we might see a lawsuit because of that. So I don't think this is about being punitive of someone making a tough decision in a situation as such. But again, any single one of us seeing a woman in a bathrobe, no shoes on, in the cold, isn't just going to keep driving. They're going to figure out, no matter how long they have to wait, who else is going to provide services. So when someone who feels like they have not gotten that service from the city then feels like they're going to take it into a lawsuit, and based on the evidence of facts, we may lose the case, the lawyers decide to settle. This isn't about putting your money where your mouth is. It's about putting the city's money where your mouth is. It is every single taxpayer that doesn't want to see their property taxes raised that then has to look at a budget where we only budget $82 million for settlements, and we blow past through that before the second quarter of the year. So it's not about your dollars. It's not about what's in your pocket. It's about the fact that every single time we come here, we have a billion-dollar deficit because of pension debt, because of misconduct settlement. And then when we have to pay for this stuff, no one wants to vote on the revenue to do so. So stop talking out of both sides of your neck just because you want to cater to whatever crowd you're speaking to. If you're not willing to pay the bill, then accept the cheaper bill and take the settlement. That's what we're talking about here. And again, not an indictment on the officers. It's a tough call. But have some decency out here. Know better. And if someone's got a mental health issue, maybe you're not going to trust the answers they give you, and you're going to think about their safety first. That's what we're trying to do. So when we're talking about crisis response, care teams, and everything else, put some money up there so we don't have to pay as much now for settlements. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a case that shows us that when we are having discussions around these settlements, we should look at them to also implore us to think about the solutions that we need to create, right? A woman in a robe with no shoes on, in real cold weather, shows that she's incapable of thinking of her own safety in that moment, right? Maybe we should have called the ambulance. We have tools in our possession to be able to ensure that she is hospitalized and safe, both getting treatment for the physical impact of being in the cold, but also the mental health crisis that's very evident in that moment. I'm interested in maybe putting a think tank together around every time we have one of these settlements, what could have been in place to prevent that incident from taking place? Because it's not just incidents with CPD. We're watching settlements happen on multiple different subject matters, right? Whether those are streets and sanitation issues, infrastructure issues, or in this case, the city not having the tools in our possession to be able to help someone that's facing a serious crisis. Look, I ask for folks to consider, you know, if this was someone in your community, right? Would you have ensured that she would have received the help that she needed? You know, in December, when we were housing people in my tent encampment, I had someone overdosing, who was refusing help, but evidently overdosing. It was our responsibility to ensure that no matter what that individual was saying at that time, that the city showed up and provided that individual services. I think that that should be the case in every incident that we see with constituents across the city. And so we have to be thoughtful about this, right? It's not sort of the settlement that we want to cough up the dollars for, but it's an incident that we have to assume responsibility for. I understand the concerns around how much money that we are having to pay. I often struggle with it as well because every time we settle something like this, I think about all the areas that that money could have gone to, right? And we're all thinking about budget this upcoming period. The deficit that we're facing. But we could pay a lot more if we don't settle this. In fact, we could pay triple the amount. And I don't know if that's the horse I want to bet on. So I implore folks to vote yes on this settlement, not just to be fiduciary responsibly responsible, but to also consider that we have not invested in the tools that we need to have in order to prevent incidents like this from taking place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before the chairwoman closes, are there any other alders that wish to speak for this item? Seeing no other hands, the chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
You know, thank you, Mr. President. You know, we call ourselves leaders in here. We have to be leaders with compassion. Leadership requires compassion. If this was your mother or your sister, and a police rolled up on her, and she's standing out there without shoes in the snow in five-degree weather, what would you want them to do? You'd want them to call the ambulance. You'd want them to take her to the hospital, even if she didn't want to go. That did not happen in this case. So we can talk about, you know, we don't want to pay these settlements. But this is a settlement that we should all be unanimous yes on. Leadership with compassion requires that we take the right stance. And in this case, the right stance is to vote yes on this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's a motion on the floor for a roll call vote for item 3B. Madam Clerk, if you can prepare this item to be voted on. Alders, please use your e-vote application to offer up your vote at this time.
All right, the vote is now open, the vote is now open. Please refresh your e-device, the vote is now open. All right, I will now call on those who have not used the e-device. Alderman Laspada.
Yes.
Laspada is a yes. Alderwoman Scott.
Yes.
Scott is a yes. Alderman Conway.
No.
Conway is a no. Alderwoman Nugent.
No.
Nugent is a no. All right, the voting is now closed.
There are 36 yeas, 13 nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Item number 3C is an order authorizing Corporation Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Leonard Gibson versus Ronald Watts et al. In the amount of $1.2 million, I move passage of this item by the same motion as applied to item 3A, with the exception of Alderman Moore, who wishes to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Hearing no other objections, despite the division this motion carries.
Item number 3D is an order authorizing the Corporation Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Chicago John Velez versus City of Chicago et al. In the amount of $8.25 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion as applied to item 3A, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, Alderman Quinn, Cardona Spazaro, and Riley, who all wish to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
I'd like to be recorded as a no as well.
Very well, please, Alderman Napolitano, the chair recognizes.
Mr. President, I'd like to be recorded as a no as well.
Very well, are there any other orders that wish to be recorded as a no? The chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez. Very well. Chair recognizes Alderman Bill, who wishes also to be recognized as a no. Is that a motion? All very well, the chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. How much extra?
Uh, four.
No, no, how much extra do we have to spend on this because we didn't settle this last year?
Uh, $625,000.
Six hundred, six twenty-five down the toilet because we can't make a decision. This is, this makes no sense, ladies and gentlemen. We try, if we don't trust Corporation Counsel, then we got to deal with something else. We ask her to bring these cases that make sense for us to settle so we don't have to continue to saddle the taxpayers, not only with the legal cost, the legal fees, and continue running up the clock on these cases. Again, these are the types of cases we need to settle because they are bad cases. I understand that we want to do what we want to do, but again, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers. And again, let's, if we want to fight over a case, let's send her into court with a better set of facts than what we have in these cases. Again, we have to trust our Corporation Counsel. Yes, we should ask questions to make sure that what she's telling us makes sense. But again, we have to trust. I mean, this woman's got eons of experience. There's nobody else in this room, probably other than Jim and Garmy, that would sit in there with the experience level for us to sit back and trust. Now, if we don't trust her, then that's a different conversation. But I trust Mary Richardson-Lawrie and the team of people that she works with. If we don't, then we got to do something else because sending her to court in these circumstances only runs up the bill as we had the opportunity to not do a year ago. Now, here we go, another $600,000 on this bill that we could have settled last year for less money. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I mean no disrespect towards Corporation Counsel. The chair of Finance, no, I takes this serious. I ask a lot of questions, which I think are legit. Sometime, I come to the hearings. I think sometimes they see me, they shudder when I'm there. They're like, Spazaro's here again. But then let's just eliminate the briefings. We don't need to have them. Let's just go over Corporation Counsel's says. Why are we having these briefings then? If we're just going to do what they say, we don't need to do this. Why are we wasting any time dragging people down there, listening, sitting in, the last one was two hours? Let's just forget about it. Whatever they say, I'm all for it. Then whatever Corporation Counsel says, that's what we'll go with. Forget the briefing, forget anything. We'll just go back to the old days, and whatever Corporation Counsel says, we support it. That's, maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe we need, that's something we need to talk about. I like the way it's done. I like to be able to hear what's going on in private and everything. So I think I'm making the right decision. I try to base mine off of facts. I think I asked legitimate, good questions. So, but maybe we want to consider eliminating this. But once again, no disrespect towards you Corporation Counsel or your gals or guys that handle these things. But I think I'm doing the right thing when I'm voting no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try to do my best to keep it brief. I think I've, in my experience in work, even before government, it's about trust but verify, right? I think people pick and choose who they want to trust. People either feel somebody's unimpeachable, or they have problems with it. We have the superintendent where people go, the police superintendent, where people are like, I trust everything he's saying, right? So we pick and choose who we want to trust. I'd prefer to verify. And so when Alderman Viejas introduced an ordinance to try to establish a portal so we can track the settlements, we need that. I need to know how many settlements we actually have going on, how much is being spent, what are the laws that are being challenged? Why are we being sued? So we can track trends and actually address how to make sure we do things better to not find ourselves in that problem. I'd also like to track it for the same thing that we all seem to discuss over here. Why we want to settle and why we don't. Let's put it up and see. How many of them that we say we're going to take to trial are we losing, and how much? Let's get the tracking on that so it's not necessarily about somebody's belief or visceral gut instinct, and more about the data because we're losing money when we're not making smart decisions. So that's all I'd say, and thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, it has just come to my attention that the cost of this extra settlement is because we outsourced it. We're not trying these cases in-house. Well, that has no reflection on Corporation Counsel. But if we start trying these things in-house instead of outsourcing them, that's where the cost gets driven up. So when we start talking about trusting our Corporation Counsel and what we need to start doing, we need to start bringing this stuff in-house because the outside lawyers are the ones making all the money. That's your six, 700,000 that drove the cost up. It wasn't the decision that this body made to send this back to try to look to see if we can try to minimize our damages. Our damages are outsourced. Bring it in-house and let's see what happens. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, there's a motion on the floor for the roll call. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
First hand up, but that's all right. Again, good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon.
Members of the city council. This matter was settled, July 2024. This body, the Finance Committee, said no in a vote that was overwhelming, if I'm not mistaken. And to my colleague's point about outside counsel, $2 million to have those individuals who are hired to help our law department and our Corporation Counsel make decisions, $2 million to come up with, we can't figure out how to depose people properly. The failure is on those individuals who say that they are hired to put our best interest first. Are we getting our $2 million back for a job not well done? Because if that's the case, then sure, let's settle. Because then we'll come out ahead a million and a half, even in spite of this. But that's not going to be the case. We're going to pay for bad lawyering. We're going to pay for bad outside counsel. We're going to pay. And that's continuous, time and time again, on all of these lawsuits. This body, the Finance Committee, made a decision. The law department chose to ignore that decision and keep this alive, keep this going. Because in 2024, we're not going to court in 2026, which means for two years, they were planning and not listening to what this body did, hoping to get a better day when the votes were more in their favor. You talk about the politics of these settlements? That's the politics of these settlements. When you manipulate this body time and time again to get a desired outcome. You want to rail about something, rail about that. All 50 of us are being manipulated by the folks who come here and say, this is what we have to do. Am I happy that it's more? No. Do I think we had a case back then? Yes. Am I tired of seeing disputes between gang bangers costing us hundreds, tens of millions of dollars like we're seeing today? Damn right. Because the next one's no better. Same gang, same actors, same nonsense. We should be talking about what we're doing to disrupt those folks as opposed to what we're doing to try to motivate outside counsel to do what they need to do for us. We've said no. We need to say no again. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to opine on this briefly. And I hear our colleague from the 28th Ward, Alderman Irvin, you know, talking about whether or not, you know, don't we trust the corporate counsel? Don't we trust the law department? I don't think anybody in this room has more experience with dealing with the law department or corporate counsel over the last five years than me. I have been sued repeatedly, frivolous lawsuits, repeatedly. And I can't, you talk about put up your own money? I've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars of my own money. And I can't get representation from corporate counsel. I've been talking about this for five years. Been talking about it with you, Alderman Irvin. And you even say, when we're talking one-on-one, this is ridiculous. Why don't they represent you? That's a great question. I have an email from the former corporate counsel, Mark Flessner, after he left here and said, Alderman Gardner, the reason why I didn't represent you when you were here, when you were being sued in your capacity as an alderman is because then Mayor Lightfoot told me not to represent you. told me not to represent you. And then I see these people all around here getting sued. And guess who they're getting represented by? Guess who's paying their bills? Corporate counsel. So, I, I don't know. I, you know, somebody tell me, is it the color of my skin? Is it the way that I vote? How do I get represented here like everybody else in here when you get sued? And that's the truth. So, you're asking me, do I trust corporate counsel? Do I trust the fifth floor? Do I trust the sixth floor? Hell, no. Hell, no. Where's, where's, where's the inspector general besides bringing some frivolous, idiotic investigation into me and start doing some investigation there? Why am I not getting represented like every single alderman in here currently and in the past that have been represented financially? And I can't get that same type of respect, that same type of service? I don't want anything more than it was legally obligated. That's all I've been asking for. So, to answer your question, do I trust them or put up your own money? I've been putting up my money, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Do I trust them? Hell, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
You know, whether you trust the Corporation Counsel or not, let me just say, y'all need to show up at the briefings and ask these questions. Some people just talk here and just to be talking. Come to the briefings and ask your questions. And then when someone like Alderman Spazato or Alderman Lopez speaks who come to the briefings, like E.F. Hutton will listen. With that, Mayor, call a roll.
Very well, so there's a motion on the floor for a roll call vote for, was this item three C? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Three D? Which one is it? It's three D. My apologies. It's a motion on the floor for roll call vote for item three D. Madam Clerk, um, thank you for your support here. Members of the city council, please use your e-vote application to record your vote.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. Voting is now open. Hit refresh if you need to. All right, I will now call those, uh, who didn't you not use their e-device for a voice vote. Alderman Lasbada.
Yes.
Lasbada is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no. Alderwoman Scott.
No.
Scott is a no. Alderman Conway.
Yes.
Conway is a yes. Alderwoman Nugent.
Yes.
Nugent is a yes. All right, the voting is now closed. Scott is a no. Okay, the voting is closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are thirty-five yeas. There are fourteen nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider. Move to reconsider the vote. All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Item number three E is an order authorizing the Corporation Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of John Galvin versus Switzky et al. in the amount of twenty million dollars. Arthur Alamendares and versus Switzky, Switzky S. et al., case number twenty-three in, twenty-three C.B. three-one-six-five in the amount of twenty million dollars. And Francisco Nanez versus Switzky et al. in the amount of eight million dollars. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items number four and five consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and the denial of payments of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing none, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee is the Committee on Aviation. Sorry, the next committee is the Committee on Budget. Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the city council reporting for the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a committee meeting on May nineteenth. Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance for redevelopment agreement with Mayafa Redemption Project, Inc. to provide neighborhood opportunity funds for the interior conversion of a church located at forty-two, forty-one West Washington Boulevard to the Mayafa Center for Arts and Activism in the 28th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Um, items two through eleven are transfers between various wards and committees, including the Ninth Ward, the Twenty-third Ward, the Twenty-sixth Ward, the Committee on Landmark Zoning and Building Standards, the Twenty-ninth Ward, the Thirtieth Ward, the Thirty-first Ward, the Committee on Health and Human Relations, Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, and the Forty-fifth Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, Committee on Aviation, the chair recognizes Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Aviation, which held a meeting on Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. You could just give me one second, sir. Can we get a drum roll? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, the committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one, appointment two-zero-two-five-zero-zero-one-seven-one-four-eight. The appointment of Michael J. McMurray to Commissioner of the Chicago Department of Aviation. Mr. President, before I move passage, I'm certain quite a few of us would like to speak. Respectfully, I would ask if I could lead off?
Absolutely.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike McMurray has a long history in both the private and public sector. He has had leadership roles going back many years in this building. He served as managing deputy commissioner of the Department of Aviation, managing deputy commissioner of General Services. He served in a leadership role as a deputy commissioner in procurement. He has more than twenty-five years of experience in transportation and infrastructure. He has a bachelor's degree from Northwestern University. A law degree from the University of Michigan. He has worked in leadership roles with both Globetrotters and the Chicago branch of White and Company, working on major projects that have benefited our city. There is no person that I believe is more prepared to serve as a strong leader of the Chicago Department of Aviation, to succeed a strong leader of the Chicago Department of Aviation than Michael J. McMurray. I'd like to recognize many of our Department of Aviation staff who are here today in the gallery, many, many more who are out at both O'Hare and Midway International Airports, working hard on behalf of our great city. Few weeks ago, when the rumors started to circulate, sir, that you were looking at Mike McMurray, I started to make some phone calls. I called some people that many of us in this room know from prior administrations, many who were regarded as strong leaders in departments going back many years. Every single person I talked to talked about Mike McMurray as a man of honor, a man of integrity, someone who likes to collaborate, someone who's willing to make difficult decisions to hold people accountable, to bring in the better minds, to work to solve a problem. I heard that over and over again. I was told, you'd be lucky to get him. I was told, I don't see how Pat Sirmak lets him go. But Mike McMurray was willing to leave the private sector to come and lead this important department, to work with the wonderful leadership staff we have currently at the Department of Aviation, to work on the TAP, to work on these important concession agreements we have to get done, to work to make our two international airports the best they can be, to make sure that we are connecting globally, to modernize, to expand, to continue to create jobs. On behalf of everybody on the Committee on Aviation and the people in this council, I want you to know, we're all here to support you and do whatever we can. In closing, I'd like to recognize your wonderful family, how proud you must be, and how lucky we all are. Thank you, Mike. Thank you for your willingness to take on this challenge.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am standing proudly to say that how proud I am that, one, that Mike agreed to come back and do this job for us. But what we get is a real esteemed, valued leader who's going to come here, roll up his sleeves, dig in, not just work with aviation and all the partners there, but to work with us as a body. So, today, I'm saying to you, I appreciate you coming back. Known you for a hundred years. Been around forever in city government and left, and then to come back, I really appreciate you making that kind of commitment. I think that aviation is going to be a great place for you to work with the entire city to help us get the rest of the stuff done that we need to get finished over there. So, I appreciate you. I appreciate your leadership, your history, all the value experience that you bring to that department. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the acting commissioner, Tracy Payne, who has done a really good job in standing in that seat. And so, we are excited. I look forward to working with you as a member of aviation and, and being helpful in any way that I can to move and to make our airports the shining stars that I know that they can be. I'm super thrilled about having you sit in that seat and having the opportunity to work with you. So, thank you. With that, I will be, yes.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And to you, Mr. McMurray, I wanted to say that I'm looking forward to your leadership. Our city needs it. The facts, the facts are that O'Hare International Airport, Midway International Airport are extremely important to our economy. They need a leader like yourself that brings such vast experience to the job. I think you're going to do a great job there. The fact is, is that, you know, as a member of the Latino Caucus, it's very important for me and all of our members to make sure that there's equity in contracts. And I've got to give credit where credit's due. Jamie Reed did an excellent job there, and I think you're going to carry that on because I've seen your history. I know about your inclusive leadership, and I'm very excited to be a part of working with you to make that happen. I also want to take a moment to thank Chairman for being so open about this nomination, really for, for everything. We were invited to a briefing with you. I believe you reached out to every member of the committee, possibly of council, if I'm not mistaken. And that speaks to your diligence, and it speaks to your willingness to engage. And we will be engaging a whole heck of a lot in your tenure here. So, I want to congratulate you, Chairman, and you mayor, for an excellent appointment here. I look forward to the work ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Michael, congratulations on taking this position. I like when I see the resume from pri, from public to private, then back to public. You see what it is that you can do in order to expedite getting work done. I've known you over ten years, and I've followed your career, and we have become friends. And when you were nominated, I remember talking to you and I was like, I thought Sirmak, I thought White and Company did drug testing because I wasn't sure why you were coming back to the public sector. But let me just say that I'm excited that you did take that opportunity to come back to the private sector because we really need to take that TAP project off. We need to get it off, take off, pardon the pun. But we need to get that project going. It appears to be stalled a little bit since the departure of the former commissioner. But you have some big shoes to fill, and I know that you will fill them. The other thing I wanted to just talk briefly about is around the Minority Women Business Enterprise Program and making sure that we are truly getting local firms. We have one of the largest opportunities as it relates to concessions. We want to make sure that neighborhoods are participating on this once-in-a-generation opportunity. And I know that, that given your, your, your history with this department and with the city, and just as a person, I know that you'll take that into consideration when your team is working. I think it's going to be incumbent upon us to get out the way. You're being appointed, you're going to be unanimously confirmed today, and government, whether it's the Fifth Floor or the city council, just get out the way and allow you to do your work so we can make sure that planes are taking off on time, the, the gate issues are settled, people are, you know, consuming goods at the concession stands and just creating economic activity in one of the largest economic engines in the region. Now, the TAP is one project, but we also, Western Access, you know, completion of the OMP. I mean, there's just tons of projects that are out there, and we need to make sure that we're providing you the necessary tools to succeed. And so, again, congratulations to you, congratulations to your family for allowing Mr. McMurray to be away from you for a little while while he is going to be busy taking on one of the largest infrastructure projects in the, in the region, almost ten billion dollars worth of construction activity that's going to be going on. And so, we want to apologize ahead of time. And so, we want to apologize ahead of time for taking him away from you, but it's all for the good of the city, and thank you for allowing him to be there. My good friend, Pat Sirmak, thank you for allowing him to come back into public sector. I know that he's going to be missed, but I'm sure that you guys will do well. And so, again, just very excited to see you, Mike, back in government, especially in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Derek Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to congratulate you on this appointment. I think Mike is the best person to fill these shoes that Jamie has left these big boots. You know, it takes a village. Family, I think you've done well by him. He's well-rounded, great thinker. I want to also thank our Acting Commissioner Tracy Payne for keeping the glue together, even though aviation has always kept it together. You guys do a great job, you walking in, you know, on the ground running, and I appreciate you reaching out to everyone, even being sick, so we know what kind of person that you're going to be as a Commissioner. So again, Mr. Mayor, you've done a great appointment here, and welcome back home, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I stand and rise in support of this appointment. I commend you on the appointment, not because of my research, more or less, but because of, as Alderman O'Shea said, when you don't know people well, you call the people that you know well to see if, you know, what they're going to say. Sometimes people think we should know, Alderman should know everything about everything. And we're not a subject matter expert on everything, other people are. We've got to trust some people, and the people that I called, too, about three of them, Alderman O'Shea, said exactly what you stated, and I trust their judgment. And so, I'm wishing you well in this role. Aviation holds a very special place in my heart, as that was the first public assignment I had coming out of the private sector as an accountant, working at the Department of Aviation. I don't sit on the committee, but I try to attend as many meetings I can till one day I'm on that committee, so that I can make sure we're raising the voice, because as an accountant there, I saw a lot of things that was going on that sort of still trickles there. Some things are, you know, structural, institutional, whatever you want to call it, but definitely have to have someone to stand up, and making sure that there's equity within that airport, and people are doing the things. Undoubtedly, Commissioner Reed, one of her biggest fans, did a great job. It's not about you filling her shoes, because I don't think her shoes can be filled, I think it's about you making your own path and doing what you do best. But I will say this, as we prepare to set our meeting up to talk, I understand those, the concessions procurement is coming up, there are people that I'm talking to don't think this is a good idea for the long term, I think it's 15 years or something like that, I forget, and so they have concerns about it. So I want to make sure that we at least listen to people, whether we agree with them or not. Let's listen to these, some of these experts, see what they're saying, and if we have to tweak some things, we tweak them. I believe in people having independence, supporting the people that you work for, yes, but have some independence to say something and let this council know when something isn't right, because at the end of the day, we have to make sure that we're serving our constituents as a whole. And so, this is an appointment that I support, and I wish you well, and I thank your family for being here to see this great moment. And Tracy, as everybody said, thank you, because some, you know, as we keep moving, the city got to keep moving, we can't stop, and we have to have somebody that we can trust to keep those things moving, because things can blow up overnight, not just only in a week or two weeks, but overnight. And your work there, Tracy, being steadfast to taking on that, because, trust me, if they'd offered to me, I would've said no. You know, I'm just, that's just me, because you've got to know what you can handle. And so, they chose the right person for that time, and I appreciate everything you did during that time, Tracy, and the entire team at aviation. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nixposado.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to congratulate you on this nomination. I'm pretty confident, as my other colleague said, this will be unanimous, but I do want to say one thing about my esteemed colleague from the 19th floor, what he said, although I do agree with everything he said, I don't believe we're lucky to have you, Mike, I believe we're blessed to have you. I can't believe that just it happened to fall and came up, your name came across the mayor's desk, and then there you were, and now you're going to give up a job working way less, making more money, and you're going to come in this very demanding job. So I believe a lot of work was involved with this, a lot of people pulling at you, Mike, especially the big guy upstairs talking to you about, we need you. I also believe that years down the road from now, in the past, we never thought Rosie Andalino could be replaced, she was replaced a bit later by Jamie Reed. Now, we say Jamie Reed can never be replaced, and I'm just going to make a prediction, I won't be around here five or 10 years from now, I can assure you that, but five or 10 years from now, people will be talking about you in the same breath that we talk about Rosie and Jamie. So I wish you the best. Nobody lives closer to your office than me, Mike, so look forward to having lunch with you one day. I'm five minutes away from your office, so let's do lunch one of these days, okay, buddy? Okay, Mr. President?
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution, and the appointment, rather, for Mr. Murray to become the Commissioner for Aviation, and I have to echo my colleague Alderman O'Shea in saying that your reputation preceded you before you even got the appointment, because too many people were calling saying, this is, that he would be a great guy, you know, and I wasn't even looking for the information, it came to me. But I'm grateful to know that you have that type of reputation behind you, because we need a strong, strong person at aviation. I can tell you right now, I think I feel a little bit more safer getting on one of those planes, knowing that you're out there overseeing it. No disrespect to anyone, but as always, you look for that leader, somebody to hold accountable, and now I know that today we'll be making this official. So on behalf of myself and my community, we support the nomination, and thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership in discovering Mike and bringing him to the forefront for us. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. And for the seventh time today, the Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
It hasn't been seven, Mr. Mayor. You want to know, do I have a language I'm going to speak? What's up, Mike? It's an inside joke, right? But anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to commend you on this appointment also, and I'd like to commend you on all of the appointments that you have had. You picked the smartest, some of the smartest people in the city of Chicago. Matter of fact, for myself, you can give them applause for that, but for myself, it almost seemed like it's reunion time, right? Because, you know, a lot of these folks you're picking are people who have been in administrations over the years. I feel like I grew up with Mike, right? Over 30 years ago, he worked for the city, procurement, general service, aviation, he's a lawyer, you know, he has a wealth of experience, always respected, always carried himself as a professional to his family and to his former employer. Thank you all for sharing him with us. For his daughter who's sitting there, you know, I had the other experience of working with your dad when you were going to Skinner School, right? And he was working with the school, and very involved with trying to make sure the school that you go to was in, and had everything that they needed. So he not only cared about you, he cared about the community that your school was in. So he's a very compassionate person, very concerned about people, and also very professional. I think this is such a blessing for the city of Chicago. Mike, I thank you and thank your family, especially your wife, for allowing you to take a cut in pay to come to the city of Chicago. Thank you very much. We appreciate you, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I too rise to just add my voice to this appointment. There's no better choice than Mike. I've known him my entire tenure here, so that goes to show a lot on both of us, but he's a great choice, great individual, great integrity, hard worker, great leader, and I'm sure he's going to do a great job in the role that you have today. So thank you so much for accepting the role, and I want to also commend you on a great choice, Mr. President. Thank you so much, and good luck to you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Mr. President, to our Commissioner-elect, select, congratulations. I also want to not only commend our great leader, but to commend our Chief Operating Officer for a great selection. I know our phone call that I so enjoy for about 40 minutes, and the pride and joy in your daughter, I'm assuming this is our sophomore in college, your dad is so proud of you, and I want you to know, he's leaving corporate America and going to government, so he's going to be working 24/7 now. He's got about 50 folks, 49 other, and then, of course, the mayor to have to deal with. But I really appreciate our conversation regarding the diversity working group that Alderman Dow, Burnett, Irvin, Curtis, and Robinson, and the importance of, the first impression that people get of our city is at the airport, and we both shared in the opinion that we looked at LaGuardia, I know Chairman Harris was just mentioning her travels, we look at these airports and we are kind of behind, and I love my Midway, I don't really care for Air Hall Hare because of the traffic, but I'm a Southsider, and just the investment, and then uplifting this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that we'll see of uplifting Chicago-based hospitality groups in the airport. So thank you so much for that commitment. Congratulations in advance to my devastating diva, she is Mrs. Roberts Rules of Order, so I can't think of a better person to continue on our diversity working group meetings and keeping us on agenda and protocol in those meetings. God bless you all. Thank you, Bernie. Thank you to your family for sharing him with us for such a time as this.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Before we return it back to the Chair, are there any other, are there any other Alders that wish? The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you lived on the West Side, there'd be equal distance between the two airports. But again, I want to congratulate the mayor on this appointment, as Alderman Moore stated, while you may not know everybody, the people that you know that know the person, everybody gives glowing recommendations. Also, I want to thank Chairman O'Shea for bringing everybody together in a preview, so we got a chance to ask questions and talk through, through the questions and concerns we had around aviation. As Alderman Viegas said, the importance of getting the TAP back on track is of utmost importance, not just for the airport's growth, but for economic vitality of the city, and the number of jobs and everything that it represents out there. We know that you're the person that's going to get this done, we know you've got a lot of work ahead of you, it's a good thing your daughter's in college, because she wouldn't see you anyway. So again, we appreciate you stepping back into the public sector to take on this vital and important role in our city, because it is truly, I mean, we are a $16 billion corporation, but there's a big chunk of those billions out there at the airport, and what's going on out there has a great impact on the city as a whole, so we need somebody that knows what's happening, and can, knows where the bathroom is, where the light switch is, to go back, jump in, and get back rolling, because again, there's a lot of work to be done. However, I know that you're the person that will get it done for us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the aviation staff, CDA, please rise, anybody who's here in the gallery. And, Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to recognize Acting Commissioner Tracy Payne for her leadership. And with that, sir, I move passage of this appointment by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to consider.
Very well. Again, Tracy Payne, Bernie Williams, Kevin, we've, thank you, Alderman Coleman, for recognizing McKenna, Sonia Waiters, Beverly Johnson, Joyce McMurray, Fenton McMurray, April McMurray-White, and of course, Pat Sirmak. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations, Mr. McMurray. The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Mr. President, item number two. This ordinance 20250016745 is an amendment to concession agreements at Chicago O'Hare International Airport approving transfers of interest regarding Vogue North American, Natsan Clark, and Cabu Experiences. I move passage of this ordinance by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, sir.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. The Chair recogni... For the Committee of Government, oh, we got you, right, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, the Chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Thursday, May 15. The Committee held a meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Items 1 through 12 are a series of SSA appointments and reappointments. I note for the record that items 5, 11, and 12 contained incorrect dates as submitted, and those dates were corrected in committee and are reflected in the materials provided by the clerk. Items 1 through 3 and 9 through 10 are the reappointments of Elizabeth B. Fold, James M. Ludwig, Michael V. Rafferty, Penagiotis Pete Valavaninis, and Kellye Smith as members of the Special Service Area Number 18, North Hawsted, 18th, Special Service Areas Number 18, North Hawsted Commission, Number 43, Devon Avenue Commission, and Number 62, Sawgonash Commission, respectively. Items 4 through 8 and 11 through 12 are appointments of Jenny Smith, Gabriel Sanchez, Rajan Shahi, Patricia Hutzel, Claude Gibson, Savas Er, and Stephanie Knight Watson as members of Special Service Area Number 19, Howard Street Commission, Number 24, Clark Street, Number 26, Broadway Commercial District Commission, Number 34, Uptown Commission, Number 42, 71st Street Sony Commission, Number 76-24 North, Michigan Advisory Council Commission. I move for pass of these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful...
Item number one is Appointment two zero two five dash zero zero one seven one eight nine, which is the appointment of Cindy Medina-Cervantes as a member of the Board of Ethics. This item passed unanimously. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is Appointment two zero two five dash zero zero one seven one nine, which is the appointment of Paul Burks as a member of the Board of Ethics. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item fifteen on the report was a presentation by the Department of Planning and Development on tax incentive application review process and, and on the tax incentive recipient's annual compliance report. No votes were taken. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Chairman Martin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, which held a committee meeting on Monday, May fifth, the committee recommends passage of the following two items. Item number one is Appointment two zero two five dash zero zero one seven one eight nine, which is the appointment of Cindy Medina-Cervantes as a member of the Board of Ethics. This item passed unanimously. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is Appointment two zero two five dash zero zero one seven one nine zero, which is the appointment of Paul Burks as a member of the Board of Ethics. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated motion, unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The committee also held a subject matter hearing on the quarterly report for the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, published by the Office of Inspector General. There were no votes taken. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Sixtio Lopez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of thirteen ordinances. These include a lease agreement, a municipal code amendment, and various negotiated land sales. The first two items are from the Department of Fleet and Facility Management. Item number one is Substitute Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero thirteen oh fifty-four, Amendment of Municipal Code Sections two dash fifty-one dash zero one zero and two dash fifty-one dash zero five zero, replacing the need for economic disclosure statement requirements for temporary occupancy agreements of the city property with forms supplied by the Commission of Fleet and Facility Management, with disclosed facts as enumerated herein. I move passage of this item with exemption of Alderman Queen, who wanted to be recorded as a no, but the first most favorable, favorable vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well. Hearing no other, no other objections, so ordered.
Item number two is Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero sixteen seven three three, renewed an amendment lease agreement with TCB Ketsi LLC for city use of property at forty-seven seventy South Ketsi Avenue in the fourteenth ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The rest of the items are from the Department of Planning and Development. Item four is Substitute Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero eleven zero nine three nine, sale of vacant city-owned parcels at six seventeen through six forty-one East One Hundred and Thirty-Fourth Street, and six oh four to, six oh eight East One Hundred and Thirty-Fourth Place, six twenty-eight to six thirty-six East One Hundred and Thirty-Fourth Place, six forty-four to six forty-eight East One Hundred and Thirty-Fourth Place, and six fifty-six to six sixty East One Hundred and Thirty-Fourth Place to neighbor space to assist in development of One Hundred and Thirty-Fourth Place community-managed open space, including acquisition of twenty-four additional parcels from Cook County Land to the Chicago Cook Land Bank Authority along East One Hundred and Thirty-Fourth Place and East One Hundred and Forty-Fourth Street in land banking agreement among parties in the tenth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five is Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero sixteen seven two seven, transfer of city-owned property at forty-one ten West Monroe Street to San Michael Missionary Baptist Church for continued use as church parking lot in the twenty-eighth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item six is Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero sixteen seven twenty-three, and item seven is Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero sixteen seven two four, are for the sale of city-owned property for use as public space in the sixth and the twentieth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items eight through eleven are for market rate sales of city-owned properties in the fourth, fiftieth, twenty-seventh, and eleventh wards. The ordinance numbers are Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero sixteen seven three zero, zero zero sixteen seven twenty, zero zero sixteen seven twenty-eight, and zero zero sixteen seven twenty-one. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item twelve is Ordinance twenty twenty-five zero zero sixteen seven oh one, sale of city-owned property at three fifty-six South Costner Avenue to Johnny Dozier under large lot program for the construction of a community garden and meeting space in the twenty-eighth ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The last two items are item thirteen and item fourteen, Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero sixteen seven two two and dash zero zero sixteen seven one nine, for sale of city-owned properties to various site lot buyers in the third, fourth, fifteenth, sixteenth, twenty-eighth, thirty-seventh wards. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Chairwoman Silverstein, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the President and members of the City Council, I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the following items were passed by the committee. Oh two zero two five dash zero zero one six seven four seven, an ordinance to renew the emerging business permit issued to Cyan Robotics, Inc., for operation of personal delivery device. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the unassoc-- and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Oh two zero two four dash zero zero one three six three seven, a substitute ordinance to amend Chapter four dash six, four dash thirteen, and four dash fourteen regarding short-term shared housing and vacation rentals. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Oh two zero two five dash zero zero one six seven five five, an ordinance to amend Chapter four dash four, the municipal code prohibiting sale of cannabinoid hemp products within the Belmont Craig and Hermosa Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Ten ordinance regarding liquor moratoriums in the eleventh, twelfth, sixteenth, twentieth, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, forty-second, and forty-ninth wards. The committee has recommended passage of each of these items. Oh two zero two five dash zero zero one six seven three four, and others ending one six one eight three, one six seven four eight, one five nine seven nine, one six five oh six, one six five seven nine, one six seven four six, one six seven four two, one six four seven six, and one six four seven nine. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chair recognizes Vice Chair Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which meeting was held on Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Before the committee, there were two hundred and forty-four routine traffic items, out which pass. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee also passed a substitute ordinance sponsored by Alderman Martin, S.O. two zero two five dash zero zero one six seven five three, Amendment of Municipal Code Section nine dash one zero zero dash zero three zero, allowing for city to vacay final determination of liability of certain parking standing violations for vehicles reported enforcement agencies as stolen. If there are no objections, I move pass, passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee also held a subject matter hearing pursuant to R. two zero two five dash zero zero one five nine five one, on the citywide locations for installation of speed cameras. Thank you to Alderman Viegas for sponsoring the resolution and to see that for presenting. No votes were taken at this, on this item. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Our next committee is Committee on Public Safety. The chair recognizes Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, which held two meetings, one May ninth and the second, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Your committee recommends the passage of the following two items. Item number one, unanimous recommendation for the appointment of Francisco Velez as Executive Director of the Office of Emergency Management and Communication. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well. The chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. You're on a roll today, Mr. President. This is a good appointment. I'm very excited to see Frank Velez take this position. Some big shoes to fill as well, with Rich Gaitis, as well as Jose Tirado. Very excited to see that the executive director comes from the first responders pool and understand, you understand the challenges that, that your department is facing on a daily basis. You know, given what's taking place in, around the world, and how Chicago is ultimately a target, especially for terrorism, I'm very excited to see that you're there and the relationship that you have with the CPD, as well as the Fire Department, to make sure that we're responding in a timely fashion. So this is a great, a great appointment, and looking forward to working with you, Frank. So congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too rise in support of this appointment. Frank, I am so proud of you and the role that you have been selected to lead the Office of Emergency Management, which is a huge job for our city. And I know that you're going to be doing an excellent job there, because any time you don't, I got your mother right across the street, not next door to me, and mother, you, I don't, you don't want me to go talk to mom about it, what you're doing. So I'm, I'm excited for you and the family. This is a great opportunity, but I know you are very supportive anyway of just public servant, you're given a role where you came from, and a leadership with the Fire Department, oh, the paramedics and, and that agency. So I'm looking forward to working along with you as we are navigating all of the first responders in the city of Chicago, making sure that we're connected and that we're not losing time, because we can't afford to lose life or any mistakes to occur. So thank you so much, and I'm looking forward to working along with you. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Mike Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great appointment. Francisco, you're going to do a great job here. I think that we have learned as a city that this position is extremely important, whether it's through COVID, passing out masks, emergency management is critical, the DNC, so many other instances, just in the near future. This position is absolutely critical. We've got to get this right, and I think we have. We have someone from the ranks, someone who knows the city well, every corner of the city well. I can't be more proud of this appointment. Congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, and also to you, Francisco, and your family. We very much welcome you in this position with open arms. You're going to do a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Nick Spazardo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Another fine appointment. Frank's been a longtime friend of mine, so I don't think we got this right. I know we got it right, so look forward to working with Frank. Frank, I know you're up to the task, a very demanding job. You had a pretty demanding job before, but this is probably ten times more demanding. Also want to thank you, Mr. President, for keeping a long line of directors of OEMC in the thirty-eighth ward. I believe that's the last four have been from the thirty-eighth ward. So I'm laying claim to this job from now on, for the rest of the time I'm around. It belongs to the thirty-eighth ward. So thank you very much, Mr. President. Frank, I wish you the best, and I know you're going to do awesome. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Want to congratulate you and thank you for this appointment. Frank, you know, from your experience, anytime a Chicagoan picks up a phone, because they want to contact the city for any kind of help, whether it's nine-one-one or three-one-one, OEMC's kind of at the helm of where things get funneled, how we address those things. And when we think about improving three-one-one, when we think about where nine-one-one calls go and what services should be dealt with by CPD or other departments, I think there's an opportunity to kind of help see where we're best allocating our resources. And so I think we're going to be looking and partnering with you to really hope to continue to improve all the work that you all do. It is tough, difficult work. Y'all know it's twenty-four-seven more than most, and so really feel confident and comforted that the fact that you're in the position. And as the Chair of the Latino Caucus, really, really heartened to see the representation and leadership. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too rise in support of this appointment. I think it's a great one. I want to thank Frank for accepting the, accepting the call, answering it, and wanting to step up, because this is, you, you are the front line for the city of Chicago whenever anybody calls, and I couldn't think today of a, of a better person to take on this role. We've had great experiences working together. I know I've only been at the city for three years, but in that short amount of time, every time I picked up the phone to call you for anything, especially when it had to do with the community and your work with the Chicago Fire Department, it's always been a, a yes. There's never been a no in that. And if there wasn't something you couldn't do immediately, you would help find a way to do it. So no doubt that you're going to do a great job on behalf of the city of Chicago. Know that you've got a, you've got partners here on this council that want to work with you to make sure that the city is safe, and we'll do whatever we can to support you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Walter Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, this is seven right here. So, again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I want to commend you on this appointment. Not only is Frank, does he has a lot of experience, he has a great reputation, and I'm going to tell you, it's a funny thing, I was with you when they were giving out awards at the nine-one-one center, and Frank was there, and you would have thought he was work, he has been working with the people at nine-one-one for a hundred years, because they all embraced him. You know, he, he just knew everyone, and it, it gives me the impression, the same impression that I have of the superintendent, that people are going to want to work for him, because they like him, he treats them right, and you just felt it. You know, you just knew, this is the dude right here, because the people just, all of, I mean, from all of the callers, everybody who got an award, they're just like, they were best friends. So I think he's going to do a great job. I know he could have retired. Thank you for staying on. We appreciate you and look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm super proud of this appointment. While Frank Velez resides in the thirty-eighth ward, his heart and roots are in Humboldt Park. I have the honor of knowing Frank since the age of seventeen, even in our interpersonal relationship and, and in our professional one. Frank has always been an individual to show up, to listen, to answer a phone call, and if he didn't have the answer the moment he answered your call, he made sure to call you back with the answers you needed to get a job done. This is a man who is extremely qualified, handling the largest events in the city of Chicago. Everything from the DNC to our local parades to NASCAR. Someone who has roots as a first responder, everything from being a nurse to ambulance commander. This is someone who understands what it means to keep the city safe. And I am proud to watch you take on the executive director position over at OEMC. The next two years and beyond, with your leadership, I know we're going to be in good hands. People are going to want to work for you. People are going to be excited to be alongside you. But more importantly, I know that every Alder in this chambers today is going to feel safe. We're handling big events. When the world is looking at Chicago as a global city, you're going to make sure that we are showing up and showing out. And this Puerto Rican flag here today is also very proud of you, Frank, because to be a Puerto Rican man in this position, you make Chicago Puerto Ricans proud, and you make Puerto Rico proud. I'm extremely excited to call you a friend and watch you in leadership. Congratulations on this appointment, Mr. President. I am super excited about this one. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
It is actually the heart of the city. OEMC stopped, and I know we talk about streets and sand, but there's no streets and sand notices getting through to 311 and 911. It's the heart of the city, very important job. And that's why I'm so excited that no one asked us to do a nationwide search for somebody and that we got the person that can do the job, who was homegrown out of the city of Chicago. That's what we need. Homegrown people who know the city, who care about the city. Let me start by saying this again. You got the smarts. You know the job. But a lot of people are smart and sometimes know the job. But one thing I know about this man, he care about people and he loves Chicago. And I've seen that throughout as I was a young Alderman, even before I came Alderman. This is my dude. This dude is real. And I tell you that because I love people when they're proactive. You don't call them, they call you. What do you need? Do you know I got this? You need some help with your seniors on this? Well, I didn't know that. Man, I got you. That's what I love. And then here's the other one. This is what I teach my staff. Be responsive, follow up and follow through. Alderman, you said it. This man, when he does something, he call you back and say, before you even call him back, did it get done? You're the best. And I have no doubt that as we move forward and making sure that OEMC tighter, you're going to make sure it's tighter and wider. And I appreciate you so much. I thank your family, but I got to say this too. You care about young people. You always trying to elevate young people to do their best, to get involved in public safety, to make sure that they have a path to whether it's through fire or police. I appreciate that so much. And Chicago is a better place because you have served in it and that you're going to serve in this capacity. I appreciate you and I look forward to continuing our work together. God bless.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this terrific nomination for this position. Frank, congratulations, my brother. I think the best part about it is promoting through the ranks to a first responder that knows how the system works and who cares about how to make it better. So I'm glad to see you in this position. Anything we could do to help you to make it even better? They picked the right person for this job and, you know, Godspeed and make it better and make it work better for our brothers and sisters out there as well, as well as all of our communities. Congratulations, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Manal Hapnworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support and commend you for this appointment. Congratulations, Frank. I want to recognize you and your family. This is a huge job, but we know that Frank, as Alderman Moore said, has a heart to do this work. But I also want to say that I believe that OEMC is not just the heart of Chicago. It's really the nervous center. Everything goes through OEMC and I got a chance to go visit the facility and visit the folks that work there every day to make our city safe. And I know because of your background and because you care, you're going to care for your people. And as long as those folks are okay, then I know that we're going to be okay. So thank you. Thank you for being here and support and thank you to your team behind you. Just know that the 48th Ward also is in your court. So thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the City Council. I rise not only to congratulate Frank on this appointment, but to thank you and congratulate you, Mr. President, on making the great decision to not only allow Frank to take the realm, to take the helm of the Department of Office of Emergency Management and Communications, but to let him take half a dozen members of the CFD with him as well. And I hope Commissioner Nancy Holt is not watching today to see who she might be losing in the future. But in all seriousness, you know, I don't, I don't think it's possible to belabor the point of just how respected you are by everybody in this room and everyone that has ever interacted with you. You are the true embodiment of Chicago leadership. And if my colleague from the 26th Ward were listening, I'd say it probably would behoove her to make you the honorary grand marshal at the parade.
Yes, sir.
But I think that we look forward to your accessibility. We look forward to what you're going to do to boost the morale at the center because I think oftentimes the dispatchers forget or often feel like they are forgotten by all of us who talk about first responders, that they are part of our first responder family as well because they get to tell everyone else where they need to go, both whether it's an emergency or non-emergency and helping people work through that. There are challenges that we know and there are challenges that you know. And I think it's on all of us to work through that together to make this the department of the 21st century that it's meant to be. And I know personally, as someone who's dealt with some of the most violent gang issues in the city of Chicago, knowing that we have a strong partner in OEMC to make sure all of our cameras are working, all of our police and everything is on point, I could not feel prouder and more safer knowing that you are at the helm over there. So congratulations, congratulations, and I look forward to you voting yes on this appointment. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I just wanted to congratulate you on this appointment and to say to Frank, we wish you well. We know you're going to be great in that position. And you know, when your staff is surprised at the appointment and also happy that you received it on behalf of the 3rd Ward staff, we say welcome and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Frank, I think we met in New Mexico, if you remember that. There was like bomb school class, I think we were out there. And it was about a four-day class. And the room, which was about 50 people, was filled with guys and girls from New York and Boston. And all we heard that entire weekend was how they do things and how they're the best fire department in the country. And I remember after like the third day, I popped off maybe and started saying, hey, this is how we do in Chicago. And at that time, we didn't have bunker gear, we didn't go to the roof with an air mask. And we started, I started advocating for how we do things in Chicago and why. I believed we were the best fire department. And at that time, when I was speaking, I didn't even know that you were from the Chicago Fire Department. Like you were sitting over there, we didn't even know each other. And I remember leaving the classroom and you just giving me a fist bump, saying, hey, man, I'm with you 100%. I'm from Chicago as well. So I remember that weekend and I remember meeting, getting to know you. And I could not be more proud, as Alderman Moore had said, to have somebody from Chicago, to have somebody from the city that came up through the system, that knows the people, that earned the respect. So I wish you well and I could not be more proud of an individual who came up through the system, grew up in Chicago, from Chicago, is going to represent Chicago the right way. So thank you.
Very well. Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this before we return it back to the Chair? Very well. See you in other hands. Chair recognizes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chairman Hopkins, I'm sorry. Please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and I too congratulate you on this outstanding appointment. Again, this passed unanimously in committee and the comments largely mirrored the favorable praise that you heard here for this nomination. Mr. Velez is more than prepared for this at a key time, as we all know, in the agency's history. There's a lot of very important decisions on the table for OEMC and it's reassuring to all of us to know that it's in such good hands. If no one else wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Going once, going twice. Here are no objections. So ordered. Congratulations, Frank. Let's give a special shout out to Amiris Espiro, Anna Stavman, Ryan Negligon, Mary May, Dion Tate, Shinetra Washington, Marian McKeever, Glenn Lyman, Chris Patino, Bob Lewski, Jamar Sullivan, Juan Hernandez, Don Walker, Wally Schroder, and of course, Jose Tarado. Congratulations again, Frank. Very well. Thank you very much. The meeting, let's come back to order. The Chair recognizes Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Continuing with the report from your Committee on Public Safety, item two is proposed ordinance 16732, Amendment of the Municipal Code Regarding Declaration of Temporary Curfews for Mass Gatherings. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well. The Chair recognizes Alder Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself, Chairman Vasquez and 15 other members of City Council wish to defer and publish this item.
Very well. Alder Irvin, thank you. That's okay. Just a second. The motion is for a DNP. Alder Vasquez, can you confirm that you are part of?
Confirmed, sir.
Very well. Okay. Point of order, yes. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Who are the other 13 members of this motion?
The other 15 members.
It's 15 members.
15.
Then, correct, thank you. Who are the other 15 associated members of this motion?
According to our rules, you just need two people to confirm. And so the two people that have been confirmed are Alder Irvin and Alder Vasquez. If it pleases the body, if it pleases the body, the members who wish to be added for the first time in the history of City Council to be added as more than two people a part of the DNP, will those members please raise your hand to be recognized? Okay, so I recognize, just leave your hands up just so that we can make sure that your names are recorded in the record. So I have Gutierrez, Ramirez, Manal Hapnworth, Martin, Taylor, Rodriguez, Fuentes, Sigcha Lopez, Yancy, Talia Faro, Quesada, and Vasquez has already been confirmed. Thank you very much. This item will be. Very well. Thank you. We're fine, y'all. It's been DNP'd. Chairman, is there anything else you wish to report in your, in the committee?
Yes, Mr. President. A motion to defer and publish having been duly recognized. This item will be held for a vote at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Chicago City Council. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, for the Committee on Special Events and Cultural Affairs, Recreation, and just general happy time, the Chair recognizes Chairman Spazaro.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which held a meeting on May 14th, 2025. The Committee recommends the passage of the following item. SO2024-0012415, an amendment of Municipal Code Section 10-36-185 prohibiting parking of non-authorized vehicles on any Chicago park district property. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote in the Committee of the Committee on Finance and an associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
For the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Chairman Mitchell, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on May 14th, 2025, the following items passed the majority of the members present. Item one, page one includes item Resolution 2025-0016638, a call on the 104th Illinois Legislative General Assembly to pass Transit Management Reform and Revenue Omnibus Package. Pages two through five include 20 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local Alderman from wards 1, 2, 3, 6, 10, 11, 16, 18, 24, 28, 30, 36, 38, 39, 40, 43, 45, 47, and 49. Page six includes items, ordinance 2025-0016418, a re-subdivision ordinance for a property located in the 21st Ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Very well. Thank you, Chairman. For the Committee on Workforce Development, Chairman Rodriguez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of City Council. Reporting on the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on May 13th, 2025, there was one item on the agenda, O2025-0016662, an amendment of the Municipal Code Chapter 2-152 by adding new section 2-152-151, allowing relevant work experience equivalent to college degree for eligibility for hire to positions in city employment unless skills required can only be attained through advanced degree. At the meeting, a substitute ordinance was adopted, 2025-0016662, which was passed out of committee. I believe Chair Viejas would like to have a word on the matter.
Very well. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, colleagues. As we work to build a more inclusive and effective city workforce, it is time we recognize the value of experience, training, and certification, not just degrees when considering candidates for employment. For too long, for too long, we've used a college degree as the only measure of qualification, overlooking thousands of hardworking individuals whose real-world knowledge, skills, and other job training make them equally, if not more capable. What we have seen is when a job requires a degree in Chicago, employers automatically screen out 61% of African-American workers, 54% of Latino workers, 39% of white workers, and 23% of Asian-American workers. This is an issue that affects all candidates and it's time to tear the paper ceiling. Whether it's a veteran with leadership experience, a tradesperson with specialized certification, or someone who's completed job training programs in our communities, their qualifications are relative to what many college graduates gain in a classroom. They bring practical problem-solving, discipline, and lived experience, exactly what our city needs in its workforce. The skills-based ordinance will expand the talent pool, advance equity, foster inclusion, and ensure that all candidates will have the best chance of being considered for a role. This will open doors and acknowledges the hard work and expertise many have built and honed throughout various roles, jobs, and real-world experience. I want to thank the tireless advocates who have pushed us to think differently and act more equitably, specifically, opportunity at work, new moms, Hire360, Chicago Women in Trades, and Chicago Jobs Council, and many more, who have worked to create a labor market where all workers skilled through alternative routes, also known as STARS, can work, learn, and earn to their full potential. Your work has been essential in driving forward policies that value diverse pathways to success and truly reflect the people of Chicago. Together, we're opening doors, broadening opportunity, and making sure that every resident, every resident, regardless of how they got there, has a fair shot at serving our great city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Yes. Mayor, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For our final committee, yes, for our final Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, Chairman Burnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City
Thank you Mr. President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, which held a meeting on May 20th, 2025. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present in a, in our group for convenience. Page one contains document number 020, I'm sorry, O2025-0016754, that amends Municipal Code Section 1730207 and 1740207 regarding residential storage warehouses in B3, C1, C2, C3, and DX zoning districts. I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, noting that Alderman Larson would like to be considered as voting no on the matter.
Very well, hearing no other objections despite the division, so ordered.
Page one also contains document numbers O2025-0016599, the historical landmark designation for wax tracks located at 2449 North Lincoln in the 43rd Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion, if there is no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Moving on, pages two through 13 contains various map amendments in the 1st, 4th, 8th, 11th, 12th, I mean, 14th, 15th, 16th, 21st, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 31st, 32nd, 33rd, 36th, 43rd, 44th, 45th, 47th, and 50th wards. I move passage of these items by the same most, same motion, if there is no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Lastly, one, lastly, page one contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area 24 feet above grade in the 2nd, 1st, 13th, 22nd, 25th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 32nd, 34th, 36th, 42nd, 44th, 47th, 48th, and 50th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion, if there is no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you Mr. Chair. Mr. Clerk, there are three alders that wish to participate in today's meeting remotely. As stated in Rule 59, if we can verify Alder Rodriguez Sanchez, Silverstein, and Lawson as present remotely.
Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, are you there? Okay, Alderman Lawson, are you there?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Lawson is present. Alderwoman Silverstein?
Yes, I'm present.
Alderwoman Silverstein is present.
All right, so for Lawson and Silverstein who have, are present, can I get a motion to allow for these two members to participate? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes, please add those two alders as a part of remote participation today. Now for the agreed-upon calendar, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Mr. President, I've received from City Clerk Andrea In Valencia a total of 38 items proposed for the agreed calendar, consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions for the following alderpersons. Alderperson Yancy, Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Ramirez, Alderperson O'Shea, Alderperson Fuentes, Alderperson Burnett, Alderperson Irvin, Alderperson Cruz, Alderperson Waggspack, Alderperson Conway, Alderperson Nugent, Alderperson Vasquez, Alderperson Apolitano, Alderperson Clay. I move these in the omnibus.
Very well, hearing no objections, so ordered. Now for new business, the clerk will begin with the 50th ward.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks and Building Standards, traffic regulations and traffic control signals which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, exemption from physical barrier requirements for driveway alley access availability which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Silverstein has a proposed ordinance, order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2658 West Devon Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Martin has a proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 4-156, by adding a new Article seven, excuse me, a new Article eight, establishing regulations for alcohol manufacture accessory event licenses, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Martin also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 14B-10-1006, by modifying Section 1006.3.3, allowing single exits in buildings containing R2 occupancy and meeting specific criteria, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Martin also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 5-12, by modifying various sections regarding rental security deposits and by inserting a new section 5-12-085, requiring itemized list of cost estimates that comprise move-in fees, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Two committees called, the Committee on Housing and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Martin also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-44, by adding a new section 2-44-170 regarding requirements for low-income housing tax credit qualified allocation plans, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Two committees called, the Committee on Housing and the Committee on Committees and Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Lawson has proposed ordinance from, for agreement to enter into a security enhancement project for the events at Wrigley Field and Gallagher Way, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderperson Lawson, Alderpersons Lawson and Viegas have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 6-105-030, entitling employers of occupant occupations where grant gar, where, excuse me, where gratuities are customary allowances for gratuities not to exceed 32% of minimum wage rate, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Two committees called, the Committee on Workforce Development and the Committee on Finance, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Riley has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 720 North Walton Street, no, 740 North Franklin Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Riley also has a proposed order for the issuance of a signed signboard at 54 East Walton Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Apolitano has proposed order for the issuance of a signed signboard at 10,000 West O'Hare Airport, 836 Patton Drive, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Apolitano also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-4-331, prohibiting sale of cannabinoid hemp products within O'Hare residential area, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Vasquez has proposed ordinance for Amendment of the Annual Appropriation Ordinance to transfer funds between the 40th Ward Wage Allowance Account and the Alimentic Expense Accounts for the year 2025, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Vasquez, Alderperson Mitchell, and Alderperson Telfiero have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 9-76-160, requiring city departments to notify police within two days of police empowerment to begin process, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Vasquez also has proposed resolution to call for examination of recent alleged violations of free speech and due process rights, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-92, by adding a new section 2-92-338, allowing chief procurement officer to require best customer pricing from retailers or sellers seeking to enter contract with the city of Chicago, referred to Committee on Contracting Oversight. Alderman Viegas also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Quesada has proposed resolution to call for hearings on the city's plans for public health education and pursuit of federal public health grants, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderperson Conway has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 400 South Jefferson Street, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed resolution to call for examination on recent alleged violations of free speech and due process rights, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderperson Waggs, two committees called, the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Waggspack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Burnett has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 1400 North Kingsbury Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Fuentes and others have proposed resolution to call on the US Congress to establish end date for Puerto Rico Financial Oversight and Management Board and ensure transition towards Puerto Rican financial, fiscal autonomy, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderperson Sichu Lopez has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code Sections 4-68-022 and 4-60-023 to allow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portions of South Blue Island Avenue, which are referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Sichu Lopez and others have proposed resolution for condemnation of the GOP's proposed one big beautiful bill, 5% excise tax applied to monies sent to families in immigrant countries of origin, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderperson Sichu Lopez has proposed, two committees having been called, the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights and the Committee on Committees and Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Sichu Lopez has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Lucia Lucy Gutierrez Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Sichu Lopez also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Gilberto Villasenor Senior and Ignacio Villasenor Senior Street, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Scott has proposed ordinance for historical landmark fee waiver for 2869 through 2881 West Sirmac Road, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Mosley has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 8-4-050, expanding definition of trespassing and establishing fines of $250 to $1,000 for any person convicted of trespassing, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderperson Taylor has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West 58th Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Gutierrez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for a signed signboard at 4444 South Pulaski Road, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Ramirez has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Titles 2 and 17, by adding new sections to Chapter 2-31, establishing Environmental Justice Advisory Board, and modifying various sections of Title 17, changing requirements for industrial uses, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Two committees called, the Committee on Zoning and the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Lee has proposed ordinance for approval of a plan of Casper Sipco subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Harris, Alderperson Cardona, and City Clerk Valencia have proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 3-56-050, by amending subsection E regarding waiver of fees imposed by the chapter, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Harris has proposed resolution for Amendment of, a resolution identifying the Sergeant-at-Arms by assigning Lincoln Hayes as Assistant Sergeant-at-Arms, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderperson Mitchell has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal, Municipal Code, Section 17-10-1002, requiring all off-street parking areas and driveways be improved with compacted base of four-inch all-weather dustless material, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Mitchell and Alderperson Harris have proposed orders for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-4-280 and 11-4-1600, establishing fines for public-way vehicle dumping violations, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Hall has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Lawrence Calvin Diagnonic Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Yancy has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 5-12, the Residential Landlord and Tenant Ordinance, and Section 13-72-065 regarding just cause requirements, protections, remedies, and penalties for landlord termination of rental agreements, which is referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Two committees called, the Committee on Housing and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Rules. Alderperson Laspada has proposed order for an historical landmark fee waiver for Wicker Park Lutheran Church at 1500 North Hoynes Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Laspada also has proposed ordinance for Amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-244-140, that prohibits peddling on portions of North Milwaukee Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Laspada also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on implementation of gender-based violence prevention services and programming in Chicago, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderperson Laspada also has proposed orders for Amendment of Municipal Code, Title 9, by modifying Sections 9-64-110 and 9-12-060, designating portions of Chicago Avenue as rush hour bus lane, and Section 9-64-140, modifying start and endpoints of no-stopping and standing zones, which is referred to Committee on Traffic, Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of Alimentic introductions.
Thank you Mr. Clerk. Alderman Mitchell, for approval of the Journal.
Mr. President, I'm not aware of any corrections to the Journal from the May 7th, 2025 meeting, a move that'd be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell?
I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Very well, for miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell?
Except for the ordinance setting the date and the time for the next meeting, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Very well, for the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell?
I handed up an ordinance, the clerk said, in the date and time of the next meeting.
Very well, the Chair, Mr. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Etoned by the City Council of the City of Chicago, Section 1, that the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, beginning at 10 o'clock AM, in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section 2, this order shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell?
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful, associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Alderman Mitchell, just for the movement of the passage in the omnibus for the next meeting.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call.
For the date and time of the next meeting. It be passed in the omnibus. So the motion on the floor is for the date and time of the next meeting to be passed in the omnibus?
Oh, I'm sorry, I move passes in the omnibus.
Very well, we hear that. There are no objections, trust me, so ordered. Now, for the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell?
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the, and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Alderman Burnett, you have nothing else to say today? Very well, hearing no objections, and Alderman Burnett has nothing else?
One more thing, Mr. Mayor.
So ordered, this meeting is adjourned.